So I will go into executive session. Do I have a second? Second, Chris? All right. And all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you. And join. Hello, everyone. Apologies. Hey. Hi, everyone. My apologies for the delay. I just want to make sure everybody else got back with me. We are. All right. So we're going to open tonight's meeting. And I'll start with the script. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of Board Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris? Oh, you're muted, Chris, but that is.
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And I am here as well. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
All right. And I do see other members on as well. You might be using as well. Good evening. This open meeting of the Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Beaker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. This order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All of the materials for this meeting, except for executive session materials, are available on Board Docs. And we recommend the members and the public follow along the agenda as posted on Board Docs unless I know otherwise. Again, quick way to find Board Docs is you can go into the Board of Selectmen page, go to the packet under the agenda for tonight, and it will come up and you can follow along with us. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields a floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in a colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. Well, first, ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And then, once a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. And with that, we will turn to our first item, which is public comments. Do I have any public comments tonight? Do we have any public comments tonight? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the next, which is the acceptance of the minutes for October 6, 2020. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes from October 6, 2020, as shown and authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Anybody have any discussion regarding the minutes? No? All right. All in favor? Where are you? Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So thank you. Move on to correspondences. Excuse me. I will entertain a motion.
Move to accept and approve correspondence A through F as shown.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Anybody have any comments, questions, discussions regarding the correspondence items?
I have one comment relative to, and this is more of a general comment, to residents and everybody who might be interested. I would assume, given where we are in time, that the WAVM Beacon Santa telethon is probably not going to happen in the way that we are used to it having happened for the last close to 50 years. And I saw that item F is for the Beacon Santa application. And there are, especially in this time of COVID and other issues economically, this is probably one of the most difficult years that many families will face relative to the holiday season. So I think, given that we won't even have the opportunity to raise those funds, that this year, more than ever, generosity of our community and the surrounding communities is more important than ever relative to the Beacon Santa. So I encourage all of our residents and all of our neighbors that usually would watch the Beacon Santa telethon on WAVN to recognize that this is their opportunity to give outside of the telethon, and I think it's really important this year.
Thank you, David. I do, I'm hoping, I've heard through grapevines, so it's nothing official, even though I'm sitting here in a public meeting saying it, that they may try to do something. I didn't realize that the funding was a year off, so the money that they raised last year will go towards funding this year. So they're possibly hopeful in maybe putting something together for the spring. Obviously, it won't look like a beacon telethon, but they are hoping to raise money so that they can continue for next year. But stay tuned for that.
Because. Hey, they could have an Easter Bunny telethon.
Exactly. Anyone else have any comments? About any of the items? I do want to commend and thank whoever it is, town staff, for working hard to be designated as the Maynard Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness. I know that that's not an easy task, and I, you know, again, it makes me proud that our staff constantly is looking for ways to make a name for Maynard and be able to position us to be able to get grants like that. So I appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. Anyone else? All right. All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you. All right, moving on to item six, the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Okay, I motion to approve a consent agenda, item A, as provided authorizing digital signature approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion regarding these two? Or regarding item A, the two deeds? All right. All in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Item number seven, application for amendment, change of business entity information. Greg, you want us to do the motion first, or do you want to talk first?
Why don't you do the motion? That way you can.
Okay. Sounds good. I will entertain a motion. From somebody.
I could do that. Okay. Motion to approve license amendment for change in business entity information regarding doing business as DBA. Name of Maynard Wine Spirits Incorporated to Spirits of Maynard, authorizing use of digital signature approved.
Excellent. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All right, Greg, you're up.
So actually, I, these gentlemen are here once again. I think we've seen them every week. But their building seems to be coming along. I was down to say on a different purposes, but so let's reintroduce them and hear why they want to close their name. So I'm bringing up their names because I'm going to say it wrong if I try. But what, why introduce yourselves, gentlemen, and tell them why you want to change your name again?
I'm Chris, and my dad, Joe, over here.
Hello.
So this was Maynard Wine Spirits, and we are requesting a name change. There's two kinds of reasons for it. One is, we have a store in Sudbury in Concord. And in the current environment, we want to have a single name for all the stores. But more importantly, we want to keep the town name of Maynard in the name as well. So we're trying to find something that, you know, could still sort of say what we sell. And then we can have one website, one Instagram page, one Facebook. And just for branding and that kind of thing. So his spirits and then, you know, of Maynard, and then wine, beer, liquor is what we're trying to do versus having West Concord Wine and Spirits and Maynard Wine and Spirits going through it, trying to do Facebook and website and all that, we'd have to maintain multiple entities. So this just seems like it's easier for us to do. And we actually got the name from somebody who's been in the business. We cycled through hundreds of names in polls, trying to find the right one. And we got the name from somebody who's actually been in the kind of liquor business for, God, 30, 40 years, and it was his suggestion. And we liked it.
Excellent.
So is the official name going to be Spirits?
It would be Spirits of the DBA would be, on the sign, we'd want it to say Spirits of Maynard.
Okay.
It has a nice ring to it.
Yeah. We want to make sure the town name was, you know, that was important, so people know where we are.
So how does that, I'm just curious, how does that, so if you have one in Concord and you have one in Maynard, they presumably have different names, you know, Spirits of West Concord or Spirits of, how does that still make that easier?
So eventually, so right now it's West Concord Wine Spirits. We're going to change it, eventually change the name in Concord to Spirits of West Concord. And then the website would probably be spiritsliquors.com. I've got a bunch of names I reserved. And then when you get there, it would list, you know, it'll list all which town do you want to go to when you get onto the website there versus now, you know, we've got westconcordwine.com and sudburywine.com. And, you know, people, some people know we're the same, some people don't, and it's just kind of, it will make it easier just for for marketing and whatnot, like even like shirts, you know, I get the, I was working in Concord today. It's like, now we can have one shirt to give to the, you know, to different people.
Yeah, be careful. Don't wear the one that says Maynard on it.
Yeah, go on.
All right. Anyone else? Anyone have any questions? All right. Then, all in favor? Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Congratulations. Good luck.
Okay, thanks. Hopefully, we can open soon.
Excellent.
Thanks.
All right. It is 7:20, and I believe the public hearing is at 7:30. So
Right.
And I How about? Greg, what would you recommend?
Just to do the overview of the pre-application.
Okay. Oh, yes. Sounds perfect.
Yep.
All right. So Megan, if you will, let us know about that.
Sure. So, you know, we've been talking to this board and some, and the Economic Development Committee has been seeing some of the marijuana hopefuls coming to town. And it kind of came to my attention that, you know, some other communities were doing a little bit more of a formal collection of information. So I went to, you know, several different communities and tried to take the best of the best and put together an application for a host community agreement. It's not going to change kind of the process with the Board of Selectmen very much. What I hope it will do is provide the applicant more information about the town of Maynard, about our goals and priorities, and some of the plans that we've, you know, agreed upon as a community. And also give them an opportunity to, you know, kind of share how they would be a good fit for us. So the, you know, the goal of this application is for, you know, interested applicants to fill it out ahead of time. I would review it to make sure that it is complete. After that, and I have this in the application process that I kind of revised a little bit in Board Docs as well. After that, would have them prevent, present their materials to the Economic Development Committee. And, you know, as we've kind of discussed, the Economic Development Committee would not be approving, they would not be approving this application or saying that they're a good fit. They'd just be kind of listening to the presentation after I make sure the application is physically complete and see if there's any, you know, questions that they have or, you know, anything that would need to be addressed prior to that group coming to the Board of Selectmen. So the rest of our kind of application process is similar to how I've been operating. You know, the applicant would present the materials to the Board of Selectmen in a brief presentation, 10 minutes would be looking for. That would be because the board would have a lot of the information ahead of time for them to, for them to review and, you know, take a look at. And then our plan would be for a second, at a second Board of Selectmen meeting, the board would decide if they would like to begin to negotiate a host community agreement. So that's, it's a little bit different than how it's been going. We're trying to be efficient, but also provide the Board of Selectmen the opportunity to feel fully comfortable with these decisions. And I'll mention that Attorney Federoff, who's on the line, you know, vetted the application and felt comfortable with it and felt that we were asking appropriate questions. And we do have one applicant that has filled out this application on the agenda this evening. So that process, you know, we came up with this application kind of in the middle of their application to Maynard process. So that one's a little bit backwards. But going forward, you know, if I'm approached by someone who's interested in doing business in the cannabis field in Maynard, my number one first step is, you know, take a look at this application and fill it out before we kind of have like a real and detailed conversation to make sure they understand everything from the master plan to zoning to kind of all the nuances specific to cannabis in town.
Great. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Megan regarding this? I will say that on the, so tonight, you know, we could entertain a motion regarding Sugarloaf, which is later on in the agenda. But the reason that Greg actually asked me about that because they had, they have given us a presentation, even like, like what Megan said, you know, they kind of came in in the middle of us revamping this a little bit. So that's why that is on the agenda like that. But moving forward, if we have, whoever we have on the agenda that's a new business for marijuana in town, they would come only to give a presentation the first time. There would be no, and there would be the understanding that there would be no motion. Just so we can take our time, digest everything, and then come back with a clear head the following, the following meeting. So I just wanted to hear that out there as well.
I think that Megan's, you know, creation of those steps is exactly the right thing to do. It's just perfect.
Thank you. And I think, you know, this, this host community agreement application, it is an administrative tool, you know, to help us kind of prepare everyone. So if you, you know, as we're kind of going through it, if there's something that we feel like we're missing or it needs to be tweaked, you know, I'd feel comfortable, you know, making adjustments, like, you know, minor adjustments to it or, you know, trying to target the right question. So it can be kind of an evolving application. It's not, you know, a formal Board of Selectmen application. It's really kind of for us to kind of understand where they're coming from. So please, if you have any suggestions for how to improve it, please send it my way.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. We still have four minutes.
Do you want me to talk for four more minutes?
Try to think of something we can do fast.
Do you think there's any that are?
How about the reserve fund transfer? Is that quick?
Yeah.
Could be. I
What?
Hey. All right. Why don't, why don't we do that? I'll entertain a motion. We'll skip down to number 14. Entertain a motion.
I'll read it. Motion to approve the endorsement of the recommended transfer from the Reserve Fund in accordance with Chapter 40 of the Mass General Law for the following amounts and purposes. $73,134 for the sick leave buyback of three retired police officers, Duggan, Nyholm, and Jones, and $33,562 for the sick leave buyback of retired firefighter Gray.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Greg?
Right. So we just don't budget for sick leave buybacks in our operating funds. We just don't have, we just don't have the budget for that. So this is the standard practice. We, we have, we're reliant on the Reserve Fund. The Reserve Fund that we, it has $250,000 on it at the beginning of, of the, well, I mean, that's what we, that's what the town meeting appropriates every year. And this is kind of, this is what we use it for. One of the reasons we use it. We just happen to have a lot of retirements that happen in pretty close order.
Okay.
And my comment to this whole thing is generally relative to, we've got to look at our contracts. When we have this type of sick leave buybacks coming from individual employees, I think it's just, it's, you know, put yourself in the, in the public sector or the private sector, rather. And it's just outrageous, in my opinion, to have, you know, that much coming back to an individual. If you don't take your vacation time or whatever, a sick leave time in the private sector, you lose it. You don't get paid at the end. And it's just, to me, it's, something's not right with that. It's taxpayer money. And that's a lot of money when you're in a desperate situation. And this isn't the only year where we'll be in a, in a difficult situation. But that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Then, all in favor? David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. That has passed. And now we'll slowly scroll back up to item eight. Item eight. And wait one more minute. Can I start reading it really slow?
Can I just say, Olaf, are you here? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay. Okay. Good. Who else is from your team? Or is it just you, Olaf?
He just muted again.
Okay. I'm sorry.
There we go. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to.
Hi, guys. This is Olaf here, Mass Wellspring.
We were just wondering if there was anyone else from your team that's on as well? Or is it just you?
Laura may be online as well. I'm not sure. She had some trouble calling in, but hopefully I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Sounds good.
Madam Chairwoman, I also want to introduce, as was already mentioned, Kate Federoff, whose door is opening behind her. But but she's
Halloween season.
Yeah, yeah. It's Town Council, and she helps us specifically to do labor contracts, but as well as marijuana.
Thank you. Thank you again for being here, Kate, with us.
Thank you for having me. They had to let my dog in. Doesn't like to be alone.
All right. So I will read the continuance of the public hearing. So notices hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 94G and Section 3, as amended, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 20, 2020, at 7:30 PM via Zoom remote meeting. Access instructions below. Continuance of the public hearing initiated on October 6, 2020, on the application for a new retail license for marijuana establishment as a retail off-premise license for Mass Wellspring LLC, Mass Wellspring LLC, 4-6 Nathan Street, Maynard, Mass. Manager will be Olaf Indari, and copy of application is on file in the office of the Selectmen. So now it is, the public hearing is now open. Greg, would you like to start us off?
Sure. So this is a continuance of the public hearing that started last, two weeks ago, last, last regular Selectmen meeting. And at that time, the Selectmen had some questions regarding some outstanding plans. So we, we know, we weren't sure on, on the security plan that was, that was going to be submitted or had been submitted, I think, at least partially, maybe at that point, to the police chief and, and as required by our license and our host community agreement, that the police chief will approve the security plan. We didn't have that approval yet, so the, so the Selectmen, you know, wanted to be patient and wait for that. Another outstanding issue was the agreement for a contribution for Public Works and the Planning Board to understand, you know, that they would contribute towards the landscape or the streetscape. And they did that through a check for $5,000 that actually got delivered yesterday. And so, so that, that seemed to be, you know, satisfactory to the Public Works and Planning Board. Otherwise, Olaf let me know today that Chief Stowers for the Fire Department approved his fire alarm. So there, in other words, there's, there's progress being made on the storefront. And town staff doesn't have any outstanding issues remaining. But, but Megan, is there anything else you want to add? You, this has been Megan's Muto's, you know, this has been her initiative. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I think from our perspective, it looks like everything's complete.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I, does anyone, any members of the board have any questions or comments?
Bill Nemzer, from the Planning Board perspective, is everything complete as well?
Everything that can be done prior to opening is complete. Once the business is open for business, on, they will have to appear before the Planning Board after, I think it was 30 or 45 days, to kind of have a check-in and gauge where the, if there's any hiccups or anything that needs to be adjusted. There's things such as the traffic, parking, and so on. And then the other issues that have to be addressed are all post-opening. But everything up to that point has been addressed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So Chief, I'm gonna, it says that you have received the updated security plan. You're satisfied with it at this point? You don't have to go into it, obviously.
Yes, yes. We've come to an agreement, and I would still have to, when the completion of the construction is done, still do a walkthrough to make sure the cameras are all in place, that they were, and that they're all functioning. But the plan itself is satisfactory.
Okay. All right.
I got, I got one question, Chief. So who's going to be responsible in making sure that the, we are going to have police officers there? Is that something that they are responsible for, or you are?
That, that is something that there's certain things already addressed of like when, but then if it becomes an issue, we will require it, and that's part of it, that they will have to pay for a detail.
Okay.
So it's kind of, at first, yes, and then it's a, see how it, see how it goes, see if there's any more needed for it.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for Olaf or any of the other members of staff? Okay. Being a public hearing, do any members of the public have any questions, comments that they would like to convey? All right. Hearing none. Then I will entertain a motion. Then I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the application for retail marijuana license to Mass Wellsprings LLC, doing business as Mass Wellsprings at four to sixth Nathan Street, Maynard. The Cannabis Control Commission approved this establishment on September tenth, twenty twenty. The license will be held in the office of selectmen until the client occupancy is completed and issued by the Maynard Building Commissioner and the Maynard Fire Department. And the license will also be held in the office as a selectman until a final security plan, which we have already, although, I guess, until the chief signs off on what he mentioned just a minute ago. By the Maynard Police Department said approval conditioned upon compliance with all other local approvals, requirements, and conditions, including those imposed by special permit. And the board of selectmen is requested to authorize the use of their digital signatures to approve the license.
Do you have a second?
A second.
All right, all three of you. All right. Um, any further discussion regarding this? All right. Uh, all in favor? Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Uh, Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So congratulations, Olaf, on the next step.
Thank you very much.
Do you know when you think you're going to be opening, or when your construction will be complete?
Uh, the electrician completed his work today, and we will request a, uh, walkthrough with a wiring inspector probably by Thursday. Uh, construction should complete within a week, and we would press the, the final inspection uh, probably within ten days. And then we will reach out to CCC, and it's going to go back and forth a few times with the CCC. Uh, but hopefully we can open by Christmas, but, uh, with COVID times, I would say it's probably early twenty twenty-one.
Okay, well, good luck.
Well, thank you.
All right. So I will close the public hearing. Do I need to make a motion, or do I just close it? I'm sorry.
Uh, I think you can just close.
Thank you. All right. I'll close the public hearing at seven thirty-nine PM. And we will move on. Thank you, Kate. Actually, you're just going to stay for, stay with us for a little while, so.
It's good to see you have your real name up there, Kate, tonight. You're not hiding from us.
I was going to put up Hank or something really fantastic.
The dog move.
All right. Uh, I will, uh, I will entertain a motion. Or do you want us to do, I, I actually, the will of the board, uh, do you want to do a motion, or do you want to do the presentation first?
Where are we, on nine, nine B?
We are nine B, yes.
Nine A, nine A, we're completely, we finished nine A.
Yeah, yeah, we did.
All right.
All right.
So what do we do, a motion, or just?
Sure.
In a public hearing, that's, nine B, it looks to me like you're just considering whether or not to pursue a-
Exactly.
Correct.
Public hearing.
No, no, there's no public hearing.
And I would prefer there be a conversation before a motion go on the table. Uh, you know, I have, in, in this one, I have my opinions. I think the board knows where, where I'm going to be on, on it. But obviously-
That, to that point, Dave, why don't they let them do the presentation then first?
Now, that's the point. Rather than a motion.
Yep.
I'd rather hear the presentation.
Absolutely. Nope, that sounds good. So then, um, Greg, you want to, Greg or Megan, you want to start us off?
Well, no, I'll bounce back to Megan. Megan, go ahead.
Um, so this is, um, a second presentation by Flavia Hengaro of Sugarloaf, um, who's interested in opening a retail dispensary in downtown Maynard. The proposed location's twenty-five Nathan Street. And, um, Flavia and Art, um, have, you know, kind of been the first test case of our new host community agreement application. So we, you know, appreciate that. Um, many of the components, most of the components are in the public content piece on board docs. You know, the security diversion plan is under executive content for obviously security purposes. But, um, you know, I can take, send it over to Flavia for, um, her presentation and to kind of outline your request this evening.
Okay.
Hello, good evening. My name is Flavia Hengaro. Um, I'm one of the owners of Sugarloaf. This is Irene Hicks. She's also my partner, and we also have Art on the screen. And so basically, we are coming back here. Uh, we've seen, you know, being front of you um, a couple months ago, and, um, we, you know, we've been going through, um, talking to a lot of, uh, business owners around Maynard to kind of introduce ourselves as a, as a company, uh, and also introduce our plans and see how, uh, of, how of benefit we can be for uh, the business around us, uh, for the, the whole town. And then, um, make sure that we are in line with the goals of, um, the cannabis industry as well as the goals of, um, Maynard as, you know, an applicant for a cannabis establishment. And so, um, after, um, meeting with you, we had also a meeting with the Maynard Business Alliance, and, uh, where we introduced our, um, objectives as being, you know, good neighbors, basically, showing that, or the benefits that we can bring to the table by, um, having our customers, um, kind of like, have the opportunity to come and see our business, uh, and also get some loyalty program where we can go around, not we, but our customers can go around town, and they can actually, um, improve, you know, the economic development. And I think that's a, a great thing, not just coming to our store, but also being able to go around and shop and dine and experience everything that Maynard, you know, um, has to offer, which if, you know, I'm very actually glad to be, um, be able to go through this application, uh, firsthand, and be, uh, go, you know, understanding more about the town and what you guys expect from our business, uh, and, and be able to see, you know, are we going to be a good Fed or not for Maynard? And I think after answering these questions, uh, it seems like there's a lot of things that, um, we can provide, uh, as, uh, not just a cannabis establishment, but like many goals that we can share together. And I think that would be a great opportunity to have, um, our business, um, in Maynard. Uh, so basically, uh, after going to our, uh, Maynard Business Alliance, we actually get, we got a great support. It was a, they had a vote, and it was a nine to one vote, um, in our favor. Uh, and they understand what we're trying to bring to the table. So I think that would be a great opportunity to, uh, share with you, um, this loyalty program. And also, uh, after listening to their concerns and also, uh, understand a little bit more of the vision that we have, uh, I think we have changed, uh, made positive, positive changes to our renderings, uh, because in, in the first meeting, we, uh, we're talking about adding, for example, a, um, art gallery to our, um, project, and we have made a few changes. And if you allow me, I would like to introduce you to our new renderings, um, if Megan allows me to share the screen, and you can understand a little bit more, uh, the concept that we have, uh, in mind, just so you can understand, you know, go with the master plan, um, and also with the downtown overlay district, and how we will be able to, um, be part of downtown and not make, you know, significant changes that would, um, not be, you know, in agreement with what the town is looking for. So let's see.
Clarify, so Flavia, you can share the screen. Uh, but these renderings are also in the business plan.
Yeah.
So this is not new information. This is-
No, that, exactly. That's, uh, in the business plan. I just want to share the screen just so you can have a better view for, you know, for the public. So they can understand, because sometimes it's hard for the business plans, like a smaller picture, but that's, uh, that's the same thing, exactly. So, um, this is, uh, the, the front of the building, uh, where we have the art specialty store, uh, in the middle. Uh, that's three different entrances, and then on the left side here, we have Sugarloaf.
I'm not seeing a screen share, is it?
Yeah, nothing's coming up yet.
No.
Uh, so let me answer it here. Can you see it now?
I can see.
Yeah. All right, so let me, uh, this is bigger. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so let me go back. Okay, so this is the, uh, the main picture, which is, uh, the front of the, the building. So we have three different entrances, and the main entrance, it's our art specialties, which is in the middle. And then if you look at to the side, it's going to be, um, Sugarloaf, uh, which has its own entrance. And then on to the right, uh, it has Leaf to Leaf, uh, which is, uh, uh, it's a separate project that Art has in mind. Um, and then we also have Tim, um, online, in case anybody has specific questions to the design, he'll be able to assist on that aspect as well. Uh, that's the main page. Uh, then we have the second picture. And one thing that we'd like to, uh, bring to your attention is, um, if we are, um, you know, if you, um, get a positive vote, we have, um, a couple of things in mind, and I understand that some of the concerns were, um, having probably two businesses on the same street. So we do have a second, um, option, which would be to have the entrance, uh, coming from the back. And, and with that being said, that's, you know, something that I would like to discuss, if that's something that, um, you would like to consider. So this is just, uh, renderings, you know, things, um, can be adjusted, of course, and, uh, this is our, um, proposal. So let me show you one more picture here. Um, assuming it's a, it's a big building, um, so Art also has the opportunity to have all the tenants. And with that being said, we have, you know, just an example here, which is, uh, like a bakery type of, uh, store, uh, on, in the back. And then if we have to happen to have Sugarloaf in the back, that's just a different, um, view of the, the project. And then we have, uh, see, this is the same picture, but ba- basically on a different angle. And, um, if Tim has any, um, input on, on the design, that'll be appreciated. Um, otherwise, I'll just allow, um, Megan to go back to the regular screen, because those are the only pictures that, um, we have.
I'm happy to- I'm happy to pitch in. Is it, is it evident to everybody on the board and others where we are here? This is the east face.
Who, I'm sorry, who's speaking right now?
Sorry, this is Tim Hess.
Okay, thank you.
Got me. Just, uh, asking if it's evident, the, the, this image and the last two images represented the east face of the building.
Nailor Court, Nailor Court, right, the basin?
To the back.
That's from the back, yes.
Yeah.
Yep, that's right.
Tim, if, if you can go back, or whoever controls the, the, um, the screen, if you can go back one or two, phone, uh, yeah, that, I guess both of them work, assuming that this is, um, the rear view of, of, you know, the proposal. So we're looking at from it at Nate, Nathan Court, okay? And it might-
Nailor Court.
I'm, I'm sorry. Nailor Court.
Yeah.
On the left-hand side where they've got people walking.
Yes.
Um, is that, if I understand the diagram correctly, that currently is parking blocked off by the fence that's up on the, on Nathan Street, correct?
The, uh, broadly speaking, yes, the specific location of that fence today, I believe, would be behind the little family you see.
No, no, I get that. And, and Nathan Street is up at the top of the diagram. The reason I bring that up is I thought in some of the other diagrams and, and discussions that we've had at this particular project, that part of the whole thing about traffic flow is that that area was supposed to be parking. Now, I see no, I see no cars parked there. I only see people walking through. Where's the, what's the problem?
So if you allow me to, um, to speak on that, David, um,
Yeah.
we do have a, um, a, a plan. Let me just exit the screen, and that our traffic study engineer created. Let me see here. And the, we have in mind, because we, you know, we're really concerned about parking, right? So I know that Tim created that drawing, the rendering. However, the main goal for us is to have enough parking for our, um, customers, so we don't have to um, have any issues with our customers using public parking. And Anderson, that's a, a big concern. So what the traffic study engineer, uh, created was uh, the vehicle entrance right here. So basically, he's, he's giving us, um, the idea of using both sides for parking, correct?
I'm, I'm not seeing what you're referencing.
Oh, the screen share is gone? I'm sorry.
There's a screen share, but I don't think it's the same screen share they're referencing.
I think if you had a few slides going down, if I'm not mistaken.
Hold on one second, see. It's still not showing?
No.
No, we're still seeing the, the diagrams from, I guess those are Tim's diagrams.
Okay, all right. So I think right now it's changed.
There we go. Okay.
Okay, so I'm sorry about that. So basically, so, uh, what he's proposing is to have both sides with, for parking purposes. So basically, we have eighteen parking spaces, correct? And then, uh, would have a flow of, um, the cars coming through, and then they can exit right here, right?
Okay, so that diagram though, excuse me, Flavia, that diagram that was just shown or whatever, the schematic seemed to have a tree and where the arrow is under proposed additional parking, and also showed people walking through the parking area. So I don't think it's an accurate depiction of what this traffic flow actually shows.
True, yeah, true. Because, yeah, this is was, we are, we are planning to minimize, um, the issue with parking. So that's another idea. And this is all input that I'd like to also hear from you.
But I, I just want to make sure it's consistent. You know, the story that we're seeing here shows travel, park, uh, travel going down both sides of the store. The diagram that you showed with the schematic showed a very nice little park on the left of the building that's not consistent with what your traffic flow is.
Right, that's for a front entrance plan. So in case we go with the-
But it's, so it doesn't, but it doesn't seem consistent. That's my concern.
I understand. So the-
This is Walter Sullivan, um, the attorney for them.
Excuse me, what?
This is, I also have attorney Sullivan, Walter Sullivan.
Okay.
So the, the screen you see right now with the nine parking spaces on either side, that is what the lot would look like. I understand what you're saying about what you're seeing on the back of the building on the side. That was just the architect putting it in. That wasn't what is proposed.
So the whole thing about the, the restaurant in the back and everything else with people walking along is-
No, that would be, so if you look at the building now, there is-
I just, I just want to, I just want a real picture, sir. I want, I want not, you know, here's a grand scheme of something, when it's not consistent with what my concern is, how this fits into downtown when we start getting other businesses in and everything else. I saw a park in a diagram that was presented. You're now telling me to ignore that, and it was just a nice drawing. So I want to know, what's the reality? Is there going to be a nice park? Or is there going to be drive-through?
My understanding is that the, that the parking spaces on either side of the building remain. They are there right now.
So no tree, no tree, no family walking through the area, no, uh, no nice little park. Is that accurate?
As far as I know, the architect can speak to that, uh, Flavia, but as far as I know, that's the design.
And, and also, David, uh, we ha- we are offering two options, correct? Um, according to, um, that's another reason why I would like to hear the input. We have an option to be the front entrance, and we have an option to be the back entrance. So let's say if, if, if it's a concern for Maynard to have two stores on the main street, correct? And then we can decide to go in the back. So of course, uh, we're going to change, uh, the, uh, the drawings, and Tim can speak on that as well, correct, Tim?
Yeah, I, I should say for, for David's information and others, um, the, uh, uh, I see the title block here for McMahon. I have not seen and did not produce the screen that's shared here. Um, and I recognize that there's a reconciliation that, uh, And I recognize that there's a reconciliation that has not happened. So the needs that are communicated here, together with some of the some of the, sorry, some of the intentions that are represented in the model views, some of those things are not reconciled.
And yeah, and that's that's concerning to me because we're seeing a presentation that people are are being presented as if here's what we imagine will happen. And already on the second screen, there's an inconsistency. So it's a little disappointing. It doesn't look like it's ready for prime time.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Flavi answer for that. But I would like to add two sort of small points. The the renderings that were shared just a moment ago represent a kind of fundamental core that I shared with Art and Flavia, my perception of the opportunity that building. And that is, you know, when I spoke with them in my capacity as a board member of the MBA and just to kind of neighbor here in town, I said to Art, you know, you've got yourself a 12,000 square foot building there, 6,000 square feet of which has been occupied. And given the efforts and interest in the basin over the last, call it maybe as much as 10 years. And the and the fact that finished grade in the basement is just a very small distance vertically below adjacent finished grade of basin. A a enormous potential to essentially double the leasable, not quite double, because there's a little bit that'd be too deep and too dark, but add very substantially to the leasable square footage of that building can be unlocked by creating the entries as depicted in those views. Now, doing that, achieving that, making that work does require a, call it a sunken plaza down some small number of steps. And the core of that, so so by core, I guess I mean the the key to unlocking that lower level square footage is enough area outside the building to safely and in an ADA accessible way, make the descent from finished grade down to the building and get in. And in as much as that could enhance Flavia's opportunity to be a little bit flexible. For example, if there were some concern among the board or the public that Sugarloaf might be in someone's view too near Mass Wellspring. For any reason, this would give her a chance to locate the the storefront and entrance on that east face on the basin side.
Okay, so um, so I think that and I actually agree with Dave. I have some concerns, but I'm not sure if it's a planning thing. So Bill, I don't know if you're still on the call as well, or if this is something. But are we thinking that the parking would go there and there would be flow of traffic behind the park? And as appointment only, you're going to have constant in and out of those cars that are being parked. I recognize the fact that it is dedicated parking for them. Right now, the town, you know, townspeople are using, you know, and and you know, Art is obviously generously allowing people use half of that because they've always used half of that space. But I'm just curious, what kind of concerns it would be to have an increase or an influx of traffic backing out of those spots day in and day out?
Is that for me, Justine? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
All right. Well, in this case, if it, there was a host agreement executed, the planning board still would have to review it under its own criteria, both for special permit and for the downtown overlay district. Part of that typically involves traffic and circulation and so on. So it's you know, it hasn't been to the board yet at all and haven't.
Right.
But 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 any project like this would be looked at the board and they may they'll probably require a number of traffic calculations and engineering depictions to kind of give them an idea of what they're approving and what the the impacts may be of the traffic. I mean, it's
I feel like it's tight down there. I'm sorry to interrupt. But I feel like that side is tight anyways, typically, like I tend to avoid to drive down that part if I can avoid it. So I'm just not sure if that's something that's a concern.
It probably would be, but of course, you know, I haven't discussed this with the board yet. And and if there was a problem identified, a lot of these, you know, if they're recognized early enough, they can be mitigated and addressed in a way that you know, makes everything work to the best that it can. And hopefully to a level that everybody's comfortable with. That's the goal when the planning board gets it. But theoretically, the planning board may have come up with something completely different with traffic they don't like, or they may like this fine, but but I would suspect you're correct that that would be would catch their their eye.
To clarify, Justine, that Wayne will also review those calculations. So we just don't simply rely on their calculations as presented. But as we saw from the prior application, Wayne had ideas about signage and all of these other things that that adjust what the plan looks like through that process, if that helps the discussion.
Okay, I think we're getting a bit bogged down into the weeds with some of these conversations, which really I think I think the concerns are valid, but it's it's not a make or break for letting the town administrator's office enter into a host community agreement that we can point out these concerns so that the relevant bodies can take a deeper look at them when they come up there. But I I think, you know, the conversation we were having last time in this were much, you know, broader fits for the community. And, you know, I I feel that if if we feel it is a fit for the community, we can figure out the parking structure or what's appropriate for there and that there's options that the planning board can look at as well with Flavi and the crew.
So the one, the one other thing I want to point out, and I do understand your 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 theory about that is that the vehicle exit right now is currently being occupied by a zucar with outdoor dining several times a week. So that's something to just kind of keep in mind. Um, I personally also, just to say, I did go for a walk through downtown Mainard the other day. And I walked that triangle and I counted how many businesses are down there of each type of business. My personal opinion remains the same is that we do not need three marijuana retailers in that one triangle. It has nothing to do with how many retailers I think there should be in the town. I think in that one triangle, when you have a total of two barber shops, one current liquor store. Pretty much the most we have, I think we have one dentist, we have two hairdressers, we have several restaurants, but they're all different kinds. So to me, it just, it's, that's my, again, my personal opinion on the board, but I don't see the need for or or the desire to have three right downtown.
Now, if I may try to piggyback on that, Justine, because Flavia during her presentation said a couple of times, and I think Tim Hess also added in as well, that he had heard, or they had heard some thoughts that having these businesses too close to one another was the concern. And it's not from my perspective, it's not having businesses too close to one another. It's not knowing what the impact of those businesses are because it's a new industry to us. You know, we've heard from from the business that we spoke to prior to this discussion. You know, I, we talked about concerns with traffic and concerns with parking on that business, and it hasn't even opened yet. And now we have a chance, this is a unique situation that we have as the as the authority here to say, do we want to take a chance that we impact our downtown in a way that we don't anticipate doing? Or do we want to wait and give it a chance to see how it all works? And then gradually move forward, which has been my consistent theme throughout is being conservative in our approach, rather than being gung ho, go, go, go. And then find ourselves two years from now in a situation where we say, oh, my God, what did we do? So we have, so that's my, that's my perspective, more so than where or how many or whatever. Although there are some some issues relative to how many are necessary, you know, when you have a chance to put it. If somebody said, okay, we're gonna put five pizza spots, pizza stores up in a row, if you want to. I think that that if given that option, a board like ours would probably say, you know what, we probably don't need five in a row. We probably would want to, would want to try to get them throughout the community. But, you know, that's just my thought.
So Jeff, I'm sorry, we keep interrupting you. Go ahead.
Sorry, Jeff.
I'll get my point in eventually. Back against both of those on on the number of shops, I really think it's an asymmetric risk. We we don't want to approve something that's going to not succeed. But that risk is borne by the businesses and the other side of that risk is in a storefront or a portion of a building which could be filled. And so we need to fill as many of our downtown businesses as possible. And if they think they concede with this business, then that's that's something where we're not taking on that risk of failure for the third shop, the business is. But we do get to see a building filled. And then to push back on David's point a little bit about the go, 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 there is no go, go, go. There are so many bureaucratic steps put in at the state level. Think about how long it's even taken the first ones to get. And this is not the first check on this building. We ourselves will have another check, the planning board.
I'm sorry, I want to jump in one second, Jeff, because Kate, correct me if I'm wrong. If we have, yes, we can, so we're gonna, we can approve the HCA once we've gone through. So right now, I apologize, Jeff. So we can go, we can, we can let the town administration start a negotiation of a contract and then we can approve or not approve that contract. But after, but that is really where our decision making ends.
But at the end of that contract, not tonight.
Not correct, not tonight, I'm sorry, but
This, if we turn them down, that's a check. And then once that contract goes through, we do have that other check. And besides that, there are checks through planning with the police for the security plan through the planning board for some of the issues that David just brought up. So the the process is long and complicated, and we will even know some of the results of the initial openings before those go through. So I I just don't think that this is a go, 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 gung ho approach that we're taking right now. I I understand both of your concerns, but I don't quite view them in in that same light.
So my concern is just that if we have the, if we, you know, again, I understand that it's a long and arduous process for the retailer. Um, but because I kind of felt the same way as I I am concerned as as David is, as far as I want these two first two to open and see what the impacts are. So my question was actually like, well, if we start approving it now, and they're not going to open for two years, maybe it will be okay. But the problem is that what happens in 18 months when downtown is bogged down and worst case scenario, downtown is bogged down. We then have a harder time because we've already approved the HCA, we have a harder time turning down a license at that point.
Do you want me to respond to that?
Sure.
Okay, so so you're, Justine, you're, I think both of you are actually absolutely right. So Justine, this, whether or not you approve the HCA is where the town has the most discretion, right? It's a decision that you say no one can force someone to contract together. So so really, you have, you know, unfettered to 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 a great dis unfettered discretion to a great degree. You know, absent some sort of strange thing. You know, discriminatory behavior. So you have a good faith reason for not engaging in a contract. So that's where you have your utmost authority. And Jeff is absolutely right that the process going through the town, right, the technical aspects of the application, the design, all of that goes through the planning board. And they're limited to some degree on whether or not they can deny an application. So on special permit, you have to, you know, it's an allowed use, it's just allowed by a special permit. So you essentially are required to kind of condition around some of these problems as as Bill sort of touched on, because you can dig into the technical aspects and then usually you can figure out a solution. So it used to be actually easier to go to land court and say, I I'm gonna have a denial, and I'm not saying it's not impossible, it's certainly possible, but it's not as easy. You don't have unfettered discretion. There's a standard that the court applies to the decision. And then, of course, the license is the same thing. You're governed by the arbitrary and capricious standard. Because it's a, it's a town created license, so there isn't really there hasn't been litigation around these types of licenses. So you're essentially just governed by the arbitrary and capricious standard. But this is where you can say yes or no, really with with a broad brush. So if that helps at all.
Yes, and yes or no being the the HCA.
Exactly, on the HCA piece.
And this is just, this isn't even the HCA, this is just saying that, you know, start the conversation or have the conversations or work towards an HCA. So we're not even, we're not even at the point where we say yes or no.
That's right. So we, it's just authorizing us to negotiate, we would come back to you with a physical document and and you'd take a look at that and see if that was right for you.
At the same time, can I just ask, so this is also the time, if we, if the board decides to to allow that negotiations to to conduct. But this is a good time to get guidance to inform that that negotiation. So but but I'm not, I just want to be, I'm glad Kate is here, just to be sure to what level of authority you can say. So I don't know, in the host community agreement, can you say, we don't want any entrances from Nathan Street? We only want them from the from nailor court, or we don't want any whatever, can we, can we add in stipulations that may actually be getting into planning board realm? But can we, can we had, can the board consider, if the board wants to give that that level of guidance now, that could would then be, you know, considered for the host community agreement?
Yeah, so so if some of those concerns, you know, is some of those issues, if you wrote them into a contract, of course, the other side would have to agree, right, to those conditions. But if you wrote them into the contract, it would be binding, and perhaps it would address some of the concerns relative to I don't know, proximity to another marijuana facility or you know, having that nice park rather than parking spaces, you know, and then the planning board sort of has to live with that is they can't tinker with that piece and can then they can condition around the conditions as if that contractual condition is an existing condition, if you understand my my meaning.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
Yeah, just to go back to what Kate said, you know, there is, this is just the opening process. This is unfettered, is the what your ability to do. But there is still the state process for licensing. There is still the special permitting requirement and the licensing, although you approve the host community agreement does not necessarily require you to prove the licensing of of the establishment. So there are, there's still a long way to go in moving forward to ensure that we're meeting the community's needs in addressing concerns.
Okay, thank you. I do, I I I done in just a little bit, I consulted with Kate a few times about this. And and I, basically, what I have been told is that it is harder to turn down a license when you get to the license point.
I wouldn't, I mean, like what Kate just said, if you put something in your host community agreement as a condition to us, there's no requirement that the planning board agree to that. They could put, they could put another condition and then we'd have to go back to the to the Board of Selectmen to ask about amending the host community agreement as a result of concerns that the planning board may have. Because you can't tie their hands in something.
Okay. Does anyone have any other, Jeff, I'm sorry, I think I cut you off a third or fourth time, and I really Anyone else have any other concerns, questions?
Has has Flavia gone through her full presentation?
Actually, that's a great point. No, sorry, Flavia.
Right, so so basically, this is a proposal and I'll be more than willing to, you know, hear any concerns that you have, like, you know, David brought up today. And we can definitely, if we go forward with, you know, negotiations. And, uh, we can definitely, if we go forward with, you know, negotiations. Uh, I'll make sure that we're gonna make improvements to the plan to make sure that we, you know, on the same page. Um, my presentation tonight, we're just coming back to show you the changes that we have, um, made so far. And, uh, those are now even final change, uh, final decisions. So basically, um. Everything that I've gone through today is, uh, the changes that we've made and all, all the, um. Uh, improvements, um, after hearing concerns, you know, of talking to the, the, uh, the neighbors around us. But so that's basically it. And I'd like to definitely, uh, thank you for, um, putting together the new, um, application. And, uh, learning and, and trying to be, you know. On the same, um, standards as, um, you guys are requiring. And I appreciate your time.
Flavia, before, before you leave and before we shut this down, I do want to say to you, um, that I very much appreciate. The outreach that you have done to the community. I think that that's very commendable. I, I still have my concerns about, you know, the, the whole, the, the grander scheme. But I like the fact, and I appreciate the fact that you took time to, um, to reach out. And show that you are committed to trying to answer some of the concerns that we had, um, as a board. And I think some of the community concerns that I've heard out there as well. So I thank you for that. And, and I think it, it should be recognized that you, that you took that effort to do that. One quick question, um, is there any guarantee over the course of time that the owner of the building would never shut down? What is currently considered to be the traffic flow? In other words, say, that's my property. I don't want any, I don't want the town to have access, no easements, no anything. Um, how do we guarantee that that never happens?
Uh.
Is our. I don't know. We can put another agreement as well. I'm, I'm okay with that, Dave. I'm, uh, you know, I have a plans with towns. I've been in town for a couple of years and I'm planning to be in town and I don't think I want to have any of, uh. Uh, an- anything like that, uh, saying no, but everything town comes to me, uh, I always, uh, accommodate because you guys being great to me. And we can put that on the agreement as well. So.
But what, what could, I don't know what that could look like. And now I'm, I'm on my screen. I'm looking at Kate. Like I, we don't have an agreement for, like, we don't have a purchase and sale agreement or any terms. Like we don't have any.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm confused too. So. Are, you're the owner.
Correct.
And you own the parking area as well.
Correct.
And Flavia is leasing the space from you included in that lease is a provision to lease the parking spaces?
Yes.
Yeah. So what are you asking for, David? I'm sorry.
Just the, it, will there always be access to community through, uh, for the parking area? Um, or could that be shut down? In other words, the traffic flow that's shown here is not guaranteed to always exist. Because they could put up a fence like we put, like they have up there now and that, and so one end of the parking area is blocked off. So therefore the traffic flow that we now think is a wonderful idea, because everyone's going to flow out through, uh. Uh, through that one side of the area is no longer possible because they've decided to put up a fence on their property.
I understand. So you need, so meaning the arrows that were in that, um, traffic flow plan showing the parking spaces as well as the, the. Ability for those cars to leave the facility at those locations.
Yeah.
That's all, um, so that's generally done at the planning board level and you have, you. Your special permit would be conditioned upon all the plans that are submitted in connection with that. That, um, uh, approval. And, um, so.
Does it create a permanent easement?
No, no, it's not a permanent easement. No, but it's while the special permit. So while they're actively engaged as a marijuana establishment, those conditions have to be abided by. Otherwise they'd be in violation of their special permit. See?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, is, so I take it right now, the way the parking lot works is that the community uses that entrance to get to the public parking lot?
Yes.
Okay. That's what, that's what I thought. That's what I thought David was speaking about.
Oh, the residents unrelated to the marijuana facility?
Correct. It's, it's typically kind of a, it's used as a cut through.
Yeah, it's a cut through. It's a municipal parking in the back, basically.
It's municipal parking that's owned by the private property owner. You mean.
Only the sides, only the sizes.
If I, if I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Within, hi, sorry, Tim Hess, within Flavia's presentation, there was a site plan that she did not get to.
Let me, let me, um, hold on one second. Let me.
Yeah. Well, while she's looking for that, I do have to, um, just kind of put my own opinion in. One of the things that we've been talking about is about Naylor Court being developed and, and making it a little bit more appealing. And I think what Tim has put together, uh, and for what the back looks like is just gorgeous. I mean, I just think that that'll make such a huge improvement, uh, in, in Naylor Court area or the basin area, whatever you want to call it at this point. Someone's going to come up with a better name one day. Uh, but I, I, I just think from that perspective. It, it just improves the look and the, and the feel. And I understand we have concerns about the business that's going in there. Uh, but I just think that, you know, just design is to my, to me is just so appealing to have that in the back. And I particularly liked the rendition with the, with the trees and the people walking in the parking area, area. I think that would be a lot more pleasant than having. I, I don't necessarily disagree with you, Armin, but that's the point.
It's a pretty picture, but it's not going to be the truth if you have parking.
Right.
Well, guys, if, if I may, Flavia, would, can you just get us to the, there was a site plan?
Yes. I think it's right here.
Sorry, you're not, you're not on it. Thank you. If you continue, I, I think I saw it earlier and it could be that I'm remembering it from an earlier presentation. But this, there's a site plan at a, at a larger scale.
Oh, um.
More zoomed in to our southwest corner.
This one?
I'm still seeing the same image.
Oh, you are. Hold on. This one?
There you go. Yeah, thanks. Is there a way to enlarge that at all? Great.
Oh. Okay.
There you go. So just a, a couple of small points about this. At the lower left, the kind of running diagonally from, from upper left to, to lower right. That side was used commonly as a pass through or a cut through when the BOA was in that space. It has, I'm going to guess maybe two years or so been fenced off and that, um. The ownership sort of reasserted there and public access pedestrians have been allowed to pass through. But the gate has prevented vehicular access to the public. So that's on the lower left of the screen. On the, or, or within the lower left portion of the thick red line, right? Within the upper right, that diagonal. So between the former BOA building, the, the subject of this conversation at 25 Nason and the building, uh, which is, who's, who's east end is occupied by Babaco's. That, that parking then commonly in use by the BOA folks has, uh, remained roughly public use. And that passage has remained open to the public. But, um, just to be clear, the, the ownership of the parcel at 25 Nason or, yeah, 25 Nason. Is really everything within this fat line.
Yep.
The fat red. And, uh, if you can see at the bottom of the page. There is a right of way that scales, I don't know that it's dimensioned anywhere, but I've scaled it at 12 feet wide. That runs from Naylor Court at the east directly behind Sugar Snaps and, uh, across from, uh, Azukar. And runs to the west, uh, beneath, uh, sorry, uh, behind all of those stores. The hair salon, the, uh, all that stuff, roasted peppers, all the way out to, uh, Nason Street. Um, just south and west of the current Middlesex. Um, so that presently is a right of way. I don't know how that was negotiated, but my understanding is it's, um, privately owned property. Um, and there's some arrangement by which the, the town preserves access.
Excuse me, Justine, this is Justin DeMarco, DBW Director. I can kind of give you a little more detail. So a lot of this would be reviewed in the, the planning board process. But some of the things that point out to me instantly is if, if you're kind of weighing some of the concerns. Is the addition of the parking lot to the left of the building, if we're looking at it from the rear. If the easements aren't clearly defined in the deed, meaning the exit flow. So the original conceptual design from the engineering firm had angular parking and leaving out the Naylor Court. So you see that little jog. If that's not clearly defined as a pass through easement shared by all of those private property owners. Then that would be null and void and not allowed to allow that exit flow of traffic. So that would also, that would have to be reviewed in the site plan. As for what Tim Hess is talking about, that right away, that is a public right, I mean, a private right of way, not for public use. Defined under the deeds and we would do that through the assessors and the deed research. Um, as you all know, this area is kind of a little bit of the wild la- wild west when you look at the survey. There is some serious constraints and concerns that would have to be vetted out through the planning board process. The conceptual design in front of you, it throws out five or six red flags for me. But really this is going to be a, a little bit of a longer process, knowing that, um, the attempt. To add that additional parking in the way that the standards would have to be met is going to be very hard for the applicant to do. Unless they can provide documentation that says that right of way passed through the private right of way is allowed for deeded access to the public lot. If they're denied that access, that would change everything from that parking scheme.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Justin. All right. Does anyone else have any questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I don't want to step on the board. So the board has any, anything else?
We can continue on. Go ahead.
No, all right. So, um, this is actually, I actually really appreciate this conversation. Because if we are going to move in, I really have no preconceived expectations of what the board wants to do. But if the board wants to go into negotiations to authorize the town administrator's office, my office, to work with Kate. And then to work with the, with the other party to negotiate a host community agreement. This is the sort of stuff I need to know. So like what, what are the sort of, um. Red flags or hesitations or reluctance or, or sort of preferences that the board may have? Cause that being said, it, it's not, most of our host community agreements, if not all, look almost identical to each other, right? We, we require, we have the same, we're, we're asking for as much money as we can get from revenue and, and our community impact fees. And, and then as long as they abide by all the rules and regulations and conditions of the planning board, we're good. But it doesn't have to be like that. And so that's what I was getting at with my earlier question is if there are certain conditions that this body would like. It helps to know now. And so because, because it's not nothing to just do this negotiations. And, and if so, if, if, um, if the majority of the board is feeling like you're kind of fundamentally opposed. To this project or, or even a third license at this time, it's helpful to know because, because I'm using, I'm reusing, I'm, I can potentially be using Kate's time, my time. Megan's time, um, and then as, and Flavia and her partner's time. If, but if the board, but if in a number of weeks I come back and, and the board's like, nah, we don't really want to do the HCA. Then it was kind of a waste of our time. And I'm not, I'm not trying to say like, I don't want to do my job. I will do my job. But it, and, and all the rest of us would do our job if that's what the board wants. But if the board is leaning, if the majority of the board is kind of leaning towards like, we're not really feeling this. Then it's good to know.
That sounds good. I, anyone else have any questions, comments, concerns? Uh, any of our board members have any questions, comments or concerns? No? All right. Um, anyone else have any questions? I'll throw it out there. Okay. All right. Um, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to request the town administrator's office to begin negotiations with Sugarloaf Maynard LLC. To develop a host community agreement for a recreational retail marijuana dispensary located at 25 Nason Street.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armin. All right. All in favor? Uh, David?
Uh, are you going to ask for more discussion on that or comments?
Uh, well.
On, on the motion? Uh, anyway, I'll vote, I'm, I'm voting no, but my, I, I think it deserves a, an explanation. It has nothing to do with Flavia's presentation. It has to do with the issues that I think that we need to allow ourselves to learn. How the other businesses are going to affect our downtown. I'm also concerned about the fact that when we had other businesses come to us. That were looking to go to open businesses just within the last six months. We told them as a board, we told them to go look elsewhere and not look in that triangle. They could have had the same idea as these people. And I think it's a little bit unfair. That we sent them away and repeatedly told them to look elsewhere. Um, so I think there's a little bit of an inconsistency there from, from a grand scheme. But from my perspective, it's always been the same is that we should go. Lack of a better phrase, conservatively with this new. You know, with this new business that we don't understand what the impact, and I'm not talking the social impacts. I'm talking about the, the impacts of traffic, the impacts of how it will affect our downtown area. We don't know. And this is our chance to say, let's wait and see how it's impacted. And I think we're doing the, the, the residence. We're not saying no, we're not saying that we will never approve a third one downtown. What we're saying is let's give these other two that we've already approved, a chance to show how it works, to show how it goes. So that the community's not tied up with an, oh my God, what did those guys do on October 20th, 2020? When they set us down this path and here we are where we can't get out of it. And, you know, I know that there's another opportunity, whatever, that I, I don't, I don't have the trust that that will happen. I think once we approve this, it's on its railroad and the, the, the business is going to go forward. And I think it may want it, we may want it to go forward two years from now, when we are comfortable with where we're at. I don't think tonight's the time.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David. Uh, Jeff?
Uh, I'll, I'll vote yes. And I'll, I'll just push back against David. I think there, we're in economically difficult times. I think there's a number of empty storefronts in the downtown area. And if somebody thinks they have the ability to fill a building or part of a building, then we need more negative reasons. And I understand their reasons against it than, than I've been presented here today. So I think we give that business owner the best chance we can to succeed. And I think that Flavia has done, uh, an excellent job, um, in reaching out to the community and to us and to addressing some of the concerns. So I, I vote yes.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Armin?
Uh, I'm also going to vote yes. And one of the reasons why I'm piggybacking on Jeff and I understand the concerns we have. And I had concerns too. Um, I was on the fence for a long time. But I'm also looking at the quality of the person we're talking to. We have a person like Flavia that, that's done a fabulous job of doing what she had to do from her standpoint. And at the same time, I'm looking at some of the empty storefronts on Nason Street that are happening one after another. So by bringing in a business that maybe it's not to everybody's liking, but it is a business that's going to attract people to the downtown and some increase in foot traffic. Um, and if Tim does his magic and creates that beautiful rendition that he puts together. And we work out something regarding the parking issue and, and, and what, what's going to go there. I think that it's going to generate a little bit of an energy. And I know that I'm going to probably not make some people happy, but I will say what I'm saying right now. But I, I like to see this business going forward because of the person also, who she is, the quality of person that she is.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Chris?
I don't like any of you. So. Anyway, but I trust Kate. And, and my point in saying I trust Kate is that I, I, I disagree, um, with, with David and the fact that I think that, you know. Kate has not steered us wrong on marijuana yet. And if Kate is telling me that we have an opportunity to control this more and the second, second bite of the apple, which is the actual signing and acceptance of whatever. HCA the town a- agrees with. Um, you know, I, I think that's what I have to, I have to believe in that. That's the first thing. The second thing for me is that, you know, whether I'm a fan of marijuana or not, doesn't matter. But we have, um. is that, you know, whether I'm a fan of marijuana or not, doesn't matter, but we have, we have had in the town of Maynard, somewhere between six and eight votes on different marijuana articles and items. In every one of them, the town has passed and the votes have not been close. So, you know, who are we? We're supposed to be responsible to the people who vote in the town and the people who vote in the town have voted for marijuana consistently. So who are we to say no to that? So that being said, and also I have had the opportunity on several occasions to sit with Art and Flavia and, you know, I, I've listened to what they've had to say. I've, I've kind of given them my opinions and, and, you know, and they don't necessarily have to believe in my opinion, but they've listened back and we've shared some back and forth about it. And for that reason, I'm going to, um, I'm going to say yes. And, and you know, in, in that I think that as a town and as a community, as a board, we do have the back, the backdrop of the unsigned AC, you know, HCA. And until we sign it, we haven't agreed to anything. We've just agreed to have the discussion, much in the same way we, we, we agreed earlier tonight to have, have the other discussion about, what else do we agree to discuss? What anyways? Lost my train of thought, but I, I, I say yes, and I, I wish you guys luck and, and I wish, you know, wish the town well, because I have the same, some of the same concerns, but I think we've been told over and over again that this is what the community wants.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I am, I'm voting no. And it, again, I will echo pretty much a lot of what David said. It has absolutely nothing to do with, with the business plan or the business owners. I absolutely commend their, their diligence in, in reaching out. I personally just, you know, we could say that, you know, yes, there are stores that need to be filled in downtown Maynard. So does that mean that if there's three or four more stores that need to be filled in downtown Maynard, are we going to approve now three or four more marijuana stores in downtown Maynard also? We've said from, you know, I think the board or different members of the board have said that they're uncomfortable with having, you know, three right in that little location. I know I have been one of those. So I really can't go back on that. And again, it doesn't mean that I will never approve it. It's just for me right now, isn't the time. All right. So that being said, that passed three to two. So, so the town administrator and his staff can now enter into an agreement or start the negotiations.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm, what I will always try to do is, is reflect the, the, the sense of the board, like the intentions of the board. And I know it's kind of split right now, but in, in an attempt to do that through the HCA, I'm, right now I'm leaning towards requiring only a rear entrance and, and ensuring that to whatever degree Tim has can, can make that dream feasible. And if that means not allowing for parking on the, on the southern edge of that, of that building, that I will put that as a term of the host community agreement. Does that sound like it's, it's consistent with what the board has said? Cause that's, that's what I'm getting at. If we're looking.
I'd have to ask the members of the board. Because that's not, that's not my issue. My issue is actually three right downtown. So, but I can add that the members of the board, do you, do you have opinions on that to direct Greg?
Right. I'm looking for direction. That's what I'm looking.
And you took out of that whole conversation, the only concerns we had was the back entrance?
No, that's my compromise to answer some of the concerns.
What about, what about the fact that three of us brought up the, the point that there's a beautiful park on the left side of the building as you look at the, at the eastern side and Tim's rendering and his parking in, in Flavia's, in Flavia's.
Do you want to see, Chris? Which do you have a preference between those two?
I don't have a preference. I don't have a preference between the two, but let's find out which is, which is which. Like, let's determine which is the fact.
I was assuming that the, that the parking that's there right now, that a lot of people use for Babaco's or wherever, that it is part.
That's on the right side of the building.
Yeah, the north side. And I said, I said, I would, I would put it in a condition to not allow for parking on the south side. There's not parking right now because of the fence.
But but Flavia's traffic engineer has provided a, a schematic that shows that traffic coming two lanes off of Nason and going out onto Main Street by, you know, as, as a car. So I'm just kind of, I thought that we.
Chris, I think if you have a strong preference for one or another, you can tell that to Greg right now and he'll, he'll incorporate that opinion into his.
My preference is that, that, that the drawings in the plan from the parking person be consistent regardless of what they are.
Yep. Okay. Okay.
And if you want, you can let the planning board work through that process and we would do what's more typical in an HCA. If that's what I'm hearing you say, Chris, that you'd rather see what makes most sense and the planning board has the technical expertise to deal with that in terms of traffic and also in terms of aesthetic. So the beautiful park or the parking and the planning board can vet that? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
If I, if I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if I can also give my input on that, I also agree with the fact that it looks a lot more appealing to have a park instead of parking spaces. The main reason for the parking spaces is because I understand there is a concern with, you know, utilizing the parking, the public parking for our customers. So it's trying to remediate that issue, but I also see that, you know, it, it would actually go a lot smoother with, you know, all, you know, everything that I've read this past week with, you know, the development downtown and, you know, keeping, you know, the trees and everything. So I think it makes more sense to make it look more appealing by.
What I find crazy about this conversation is that when we talked about this several weeks ago, the whole issue of the use of that parking space was one of the key points that they made relative to how it would not have an impact on our downtown. And again, my concern is downtown impacts and how everything gets impacted, traffic flow and whatever. And I loved the rendition that was shown to us with the walkway and everything else. I love that rendition, but it's not what we know will work based on the conversation we had just three or four weeks ago, when we were concerned about traffic flow and that they were commenting on how wonderful it is that they have their own parking and they'd be able to bring cars in and have cars go out and it wouldn't impact us at all. Now, now removing that parking is creating an entirely different set of circumstances that goes beyond where we were just three weeks ago, which highlights even more so why we're not prepared to make this move. We need to see how it all impacts. Perhaps having them put in a park after we see that the rest of the impact of the other two businesses are not that impactful downtown, we'll learn that's what we need to do. And it will create a great little area for, for the basin and start to create the transition of the basin. We're not at that point because we don't know what the impact of these other two are going to be. We might find ourselves in a situation where, God, we need more traffic flow than we can live with. Open it all up because we have too much traffic. I don't know. We have.
Madam Chair. Yes. Madam Chair, I just, I just want to Google Earth. So to the right of the building, there's no parking spaces currently there?
No, it's fenced off.
Yes.
If you're looking.
I can see the fence that's at the back. So what would you use that prior to the fence going?
It used to be, it was when the bank was there, it was traffic flow. It was first off, there was a drive, there was a drive through against the side of the building, but also vehicles would use that as traffic flow.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, David.
If I may, I think what Greg was looking for was just to see if the board said, yes, it needs to be one or the other. But if we're willing to rely on the technical expertise of the planning board before it comes back to us and we don't have a strong sense that one or the other is necessarily going to be important after, before that technical expertise. And I think we can let Greg go and bring back what the consensus is for the best option for that slot of land from, from the parking study that we have and from the planning board and from the technical.
Oh.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Just to be clear on that piece. So the process is at the CCC that you can't even apply to the CCC until you have an HCA. So if you were to, were required them to go through the whole planning board process and hire their engineers to produce not the renderings that they produce for us, but technical plans. It's, that's a very comprehensive process. So I think what Greg was, I think we have so many competing things. So we have David who's concerned about the parking.
Partly.
Part, partly, partly in part, but now that the HCA negotiation has been approved, your, your major concern right now is parking and impact. And Armin expressed his like on the aesthetic. And Chris, I'm still not sure where you are.
I'm in the kitchen.
That's good. I like.
The question came up as to whether or not I was for, for parking or against parking and, and either or is okay with me. I just want all the plans to show the same thing. To David's point, we're looking at one picture, but the, but the, the, the drawings show another. That's all I'm saying. I, I, I don't really have an opinion either way. Because I haven't, I haven't seen a traffic study or read a traffic study. All I've seen is one schematic. So, you know, those things will, those things will come later. And, you know, as, as far as that the, anyone on the planning board having a more technical base in knowledge of this stuff than anyone on a select, board of selectmen, any one of us can read a parking report and, and come up to the same conclusion. So, you know, we'll get what we get and we'll make our decision as to the HCA. But for now, we just need to have it so that the plans and the drawings are all consistent. So we all are looking at the same picture. Whether it's parking or, or a beautiful park with a little family and dogs and a tree.
Right. And the piece I was trying, the point I was trying to make actually was that I think they gave the two competing options because they don't know how the planning board is going to see it. And both options are probably pretty, you know, they're compelling for a lot of reasons. But I don't know, and Flavia should probably interject here. I don't know if they have those technical calculations yet. I would imagine not.
No, we don't.
Yeah. And so then it becomes a question of, are we going to mandate that they invest that kind of money before we execute the HCA? And, and maybe that's true. I don't know what your preference is, but I just wanted to be clear that that's a different undertaking than, than saying just right now you like the look of it or you really want the parking to be addressed. So.
Madam Chair, I'd like to intervene if I may.
Okay. Hold on one second, Tim. Kate, were you all done?
Yeah. So I mean, and that's really, that's really, I think the direction Greg's looking for, for us to go back with. Do we rely on the planning board for, for them to determine that in the future, once they get those technical calculations? Or are you going to ask us to try to attempt to craft something in the HCA to address one or the other?
And I think that's what Greg was asking for from the beginning.
And it looks to me like nobody's vote was contingent on that one distinction, that it was a higher level vote. So I think, I think we, we make the best decision we can going forward.
Okay. So Tim, go ahead. You have something to add?
Thank you very much. I'd like to just suggest it may be beneficial to the group. Solving the needs of the town in reconciliation with those aspects of access and circulation that would benefit the business is not a simple thing to explain or a simple thing to work through. And at this very early stage of any complicated design problem, it is very common that contradictions and things that are not resolved and things that don't agree with each other are present. And it's the, the job of the design process, the task of the design process to resolve those things. The, the process and, and Bill can speak more authoritatively to the role of the planning board. But the, the process through which a building and a set of uses in the zone, as this is both, you know, zone for business and in the overlay district. So the applicant would have a choice to make about which zoning bylaws under which to apply. There's very substantial scrutiny that would include Justin and his department, Wayne, and likely others. And, and for those of you that has, that have followed any of the other relatively complicated development projects downtown, the parking and circulation is one of a number of complicated issues that are by their nature iterative. So I would, while, while on the one hand, I agree with, I think it would probably be helpful for Greg to sort of get a temperature and a, and a sense of preference from the board about anything they, they, that they saw tonight that they could have a reaction to. I would caution from translating that preference into a prohibition against, for example, through circulation or a requirement for the park in that either of those might foreclose upon or really narrow and diminish the opportunity for a thoughtful, careful resolution to come about over what's likely to be months and months of a design process.
Thank you. I think that, I think, I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, Greg, I just cut you off, but yes, I do, you know, we are well aware of the host community agreement process and the thought and negotiations that go into that. And also the subsequent processes with the planning board and other staff for the town. So I think that, I think that we can feel comfortable letting Greg and Kate start the negotiations. And I will say that board members, if you have anything that you feel very strongly about, I ask you to email Greg and share your concerns. And if that's something that can be worked into the agreement, great. And if not, we can reconvene and talk about why it can't be.
Right. And email only me.
Yes, do not email everyone.
Nobody else.
You only said that because Kate's here tonight.
No, I, I would welcome your direction like, because, because otherwise it's just going to be the standard HCA. And then, and then in a couple of weeks, when if I get it back to you, it's going to see standard. I think you understand the point.
Yep.
All right. Sounds good. Does anyone else have anything else before we let Flavia and her team finally go? All right.
Thank you for your time.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to the extension of premises. Oh, we have lots of motions here. Greg, do you want to give us a rundown real quick and then we'll get everybody on tap to start making motions?
But only to introduce the, the concept that, you know, the, the governor's office, as I said on the sixth October meeting, the governor's office has allowed for an extension of the outdoor premises that we are currently allowing. And so Megan, Megan kind of surveyed those businesses that are already using outdoor use of space. And, and so she, I'm going to allow her and give her all the credit because she's, she's the one that, that, and I can see there's a lot of attendance tonight that are interested to see how this is going to go. So this is a follow-up to the sixth. So Megan, you want to explain what they're looking at?
Sure. And so we, we discussed this briefly at the last board of segment meeting. Since the governor has allowed the extension of this kind of extension of premises program, I reached out to the businesses that have, that have taken advantage of it and see if, if people were interested in kind of keeping their outdoor dining as weather permits. And we had an overwhelming response that yes, the businesses would like the opportunity to, you know, continue and hope for good weather as, you know, we kind of continue into the fall and, and early winter. So we created an application. You know, this was actually also vetted by town council Federoff who's on still and you know, ran it through our typical review team. Basically, we just were telling them if we say it's going to be a snow or ice event, you have to take everything down, you know, and we've communicated that we put all the protection. That was something that, you know, Attorney Federoff helped us with. Justin, you know, from DPW, police and fire. We really, we all worked together to make sure that we're all comfortable with the language, the businesses. You know, a small town, a lot of them are on, are on today, all understand. And it's just, you know, trying to give them every opportunity to take advantage of some of these nice days coming up. So you know, we have several extension requests attached and you know, I think the program has been going well. I think there, there haven't really been complaints that cross my desk. And so I think. you know, I think the program has been going well. I think there haven't really been complaints that cross my desk. And so I think that giving these businesses an opportunity to you know, try to try to keep going on for a little bit longer is 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 my recommendation.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for anyone? There are a number of businesses on right now. So if you have a question about a particular business, or if you have a question for Megan or Greg or Kate, for that matter.
I have a question. Do we have to read each individual?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing.
Yes, I think we do.
You do?
You know, for the liquor piece, you know, we do have serendipity on here. And Babakos that don't have the liquor piece, but for the local licensing authority to officially allow for this extension, we're just trying to check all of our boxes so we can send everything into the to the alcohol, the ABCC.
Chris is going to do speed reading.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, I want to, I also, I want to thank Megan and and Justin and everyone else who has worked through and Becky with all of the approvals that have that all the paperwork that's going to have to go into this as well. Because I really do. I'm glad we're able to work with the town businesses and thank you for putting all of this together quickly so we can make it work. All right. So I guess I'll entertain a motion for the PC.
I move to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property, parking lot, municipal right way, extension request submitted by the Pleasant Cafe through December 31st, 2020, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plan submitted, which plans are incorporated into the original approval decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. I'm thinking that we'll read through all of the motions and do one vote. Sound good?
That sounds like a great idea.
All right. So one for Gigi's.
I'll read that one. I moved to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property, parking lot, municipal right of way, extension request submitted by Gigi's through December 31st, 2020, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plan submitted, which plans are incorporated into the original approval decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Amory's too.
I'll read that one, I guess. I move to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area, private property, parking lot, municipal right of way, extension request submitted to Amory's tomb through December 31st, 2020, with approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plan submitted, which plans are incorporated into the original approval decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Sorry, I lost track. Serendipity.
Go ahead, Jeff.
David was up. I'll move to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property, parking lot, or municipal right of way, extension request submitted by Serendipity through December 31st, 2020, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject and subject to compliance with the plan submitted, which plans are incorporated into the original approval decision.
Second. All right, Armin second that. Perfect. How about Azukar?
I'll do that. I'll move to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area and private property, parking lot, municipal right of way, extension request submitted by Azukar through December 31st, 2020, which with approval, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plan submitted, which plans are incorporated into the original approval decision.
Second. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Jeff and Chris. All right, El appeal.
I'll read that.
Okay.
Move to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property, parking lot, municipal right of way, extended request submitted by L appeal through December 31st, 2020, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plan submitted, which are incorporated into the original approval decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Smack noodle.
I'll do that one. I'll prove almost to move to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property, parking lot, municipal right of way, extension request submitted by smack noodle through December 31st, 2020, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plan submitted, which plans are incorporated into the original approval decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Armin and Chris. Maynard Lodge of Elks.
I have moved to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area on private property, parking lot, municipal right of way, extension request submitted by Maynard Lodge of Elks through December 31st, 2020, which approval is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plan submitted, which plans are incorporated into the original approval decision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armin. And Babakos.
I move to approve the application for temporary extension of premises, outdoor dining area and private property, parking lot, municipal right of way, extension request submitted by Babakos through December 31st, 2020, which approval in is subject to compliance with the terms and conditions of the board's policy and subject to compliance with the plans submitted, which are incorporated into the original approval decision and authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Jeff and Chris. Okay, any further discussion regarding this? No. All right, all in favor. David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you very much. Thank you, Kate, for all of your help tonight.
Yes, thanks, Kate.
Thank you so much for having me, you guys. Have a great night.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 11. I will entertain a motion for Public Works.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Stan Tech for preliminary design proposal well for a development and treatment plant improvements in the amount of $91,000 and to authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, David. Reg, do you want to start us off?
Well, yeah, but only to reduce Justin DiMarco, DPW Director. This is this is another step in the direction of the long term capital improvements and and sort of water supply that we, you know, as we all know, we have an urgency to address the town of Maynard. So and the memo is there as well, just as backup. But Dustin, briefly, can you give a a brief overview of what you're asking for and where the money is coming from?
Yeah, good evening. This is Justin DiMarco, DPW Director. Yeah, I think at this point, the board is well aware of what well for A is. It's probably seared into your brains at this point. And as you all know, that we've been kind of taking a number of steps moving forward in the process as the analysis and the parenting process is is one that takes a very long time. I don't want to go into major detail, but this is another step in the right direction. I know the last time we spoke, I think the board is aware that we were in negotiations with National, ah, excuse me, Natural Heritage over the impacts to the turtle habitat. We have come to a final agreement and the negotiation has been successful. That has been submitted to Mass DEP. Mass DEP is still the authority that will permit this ground well source. So we are very confident as Mass DEP returned what is considered an order of completion notice. And with that is kind of similar to like a punchless notice at the end of like any kind of design engineering process where there's a number of small informational gaps that might have been missing that we're just filling the void with. So we're very close. So at this point, I want to make sure that we move the process in an expedited manner. So I have tasked Antec with with offering a proposal for engineering services to start the preliminary design of the ground well source and the infrastructure that goes with it, including the upgrades at the well for treatment facility, which is the treatment facility for this new ground well source. And this is the design aspect, and we will be using our FY21 operating budget. We have two line items consultant and engineering line items that could be utilized for this. And we are going to try to eliminate or minimize deadening out some of the engineering processes for this so that we could utilize and maximize the $1.5 million borrowing capacity that we've already obtained through annual town meeting. And just so you also know that we did also put in for another $1.5 million in a Mass Works grant. This did come across the board recently. So we're hoping that we don't have to borrow more money. So just during this preliminary design, this will start to highlight the treatment processes and the actual infrastructure. So I'm just looking for the board's approval. We will be using the town's standard contract. So that's why it's not included. You guys are very familiar with the standard contract. This is not a contract from Stan Tech. It is a contract from the town. That's already pre pre-vetted through Lisa Mead's office.
Thank you, Justin. Anyone have any questions for Justin?
Thank you, Justin. The big comment, the big question I had was the final point you made relative to the the funding source, which I wanted to know where that was coming from. And you answered it great. Thank you.
No problem, David. I know in our last water rate conversation, you know, we really tried to highlight that we're going to try to limit some of the deadening out of unnecessary services. And this is one of those aspects.
So Justin, just a real quick, actually, it's probably a spoiler alert because I think I saw this on the town administrative report. But but did I see a summary that said that when we talk about, you know, the need for for A? Did I see in the summary that right now our average use has been or our use has been 2 million gallons a day?
No, 2 million gallons over the quarter read. So 2 million gallons a day, we would crumble. Yeah, the reads are quarterly. So we used an average of 2 million more gallons over our last quarter compared to our average use. Which is a good thing from, as you know, from a revenue standpoint, but also a very hard process as we are consistently up against what is our cap. So we're hoping to get this moving along, hopefully spring, early summer at the latest.
Great, great. Thank you. Anyone have any other questions? Glad I clarified that. All right, then all in favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you very much, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 12, Maynard Golf Course. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve contract extension for management services of the Maynard Golf Course by Sterling Golf Management Incorporated for term to expire December 31st, 2021, authorizing use of digital signatures approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. Greg?
Right. So this is this is just the final year extension for the Maynard Golf Course with Sterling Golf Management. And then if the board approves this, then we would be anticipating on the request for proposal for this. If we want to continue with contracting out the management of the golf course, which I recommend at this time that we do. And then in order to do that, or you can either keep a three year contract, but to go beyond that would require a town meeting vote. And then so an article would be sponsored for the annual town meeting in the spring, presumably in the spring to do if we want to do longer than than three years. But at this time, I'm just asking for the board to consider an extension. And right now, we're we are satisfied with the with the terms of the contract. So I do recommend this this extension. Justin DiMarco recommends this extension. I believe Sterling Golf Management has actually been quite cooperative. They've been very responsive to requests that I myself or Justin that or others have made. And I look forward to to seeing, you know, that relationship continue and and maybe they win the proposal if we go down that route or or not. But I've been satisfied with Sterling Golf.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Greg? About it, concerns? All right. Then we'll move on. So all in favor, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Thank you.
Great. So then next time you'll you'll hear about golf stuff that it'll be in the form of a proposal for a sponsored article for for a longer than three year. That's my current recommendation. That's where I'm headed is probably that five year.
So is that so, you know, I'm sorry. And so will that sponsored article be for the this spring then?
Yep.
Yeah.
Because that way we can be, we need approval to do a contract for longer.
Okay. Got it. Moving on to Crosstown Connect. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve amendment to the inter municipal agreement related to Crosstown Connect as provided authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, Greg?
Right. So Crosstown Connect, for those of you in the public who don't know, it's the regional collaboration to provide transportation primarily in in Maynard. We get that through the shuttle program. So we have two shuttle programs. One is for primarily council on aging and it's kind of like point called dispatchers, which is provided through mostly through transaction associates, which is kind of the manager of or the administrative manager of Crosstown Connect. And they and they they that vendor got that contract through a proposal process. But transaction associates, they help dispatch for the council on aging bands. But a very successful the others, the other program is what Mark Konig drives around town as he pretty much takes commuters or used to take commuters to the train station. So that's what that's a background of what Crosstown Connect, mostly what they provide for the town. But as I, as I told the the board last meeting, I think it was last meeting, we needed to, we needed to amend it. Like they need, we need to look at this this program. I don't know how many years old this program is, but it just naturally, things are going to have to change eventually anyways. But in this case, Crosstown Connect was operating at a loss. So we we needed to reevaluate. And and so we are doing that. Now, Acton is the host, so to speak, the host community of of the Crosstown Connect contract, this intermunicipal agreement. And so John Mandrill, the town manager, reached out to us a while ago to propose this change. And now this is just an extension to the contract to allow us more time to negotiate a new contract. So if this is, if you, the board, if the board approves this, we would be one of and I can't remember, I think there's five communities that are part of this regional collaboration of Crosstown Connect. And then and if everybody approves, then the contract would be extended to June 21. But in the meantime, we'll continue to negotiate with, you know, amongst ourselves, the board, so to speak, of Crosstown Connect into what a new agreement may look like. Coincidentally as well, we spoke, Megan and I had a meeting today with the new director assigned from Transaction Associates to manage our Crosstown Connect. Just to kind of make sure that, as I said, those shuttles that we most care about, frankly, a kind of a selfish standpoint, that we might, those are successful and preserved. So we had that conversation as well as as well as the sort of like ongoing endeavors like getting in all the market basket and 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 the view and Camilla Gardens and and the Chinese school and trying to make sure that it keeps it on their radar as to what our horizon is for, you know, transportation needs.
Yeah. First off, Greg, there's seven communities, not five. But it's it's a much larger program than you than you thought. But but really, in in, I'm just trying to get a grasp with with this agreement to extend it, it's really, there's really nothing there, right? There's no change in terms. It's just a change in in the the time limit at the end of it. Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying. Yep.
Anyone else? And you have, anyone else have any questions for Greg? All right. Okay, well then we will move forward. All in favor to approve, David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris? Oh, you're muted. Oh, you're muted.
Yes, I figured you didn't want to hear the dogs barking.
And Jeff?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you for that. We already did fourteen, this the reserve and transfer, so I'll go to fifteen. Considering the amendment to the common victory license fee payment schedule for twenty twenty one. Greg?
Right, so this is something I threw out there to the board last meeting, just to to see if you would consider this sort of like a split, so to speak, of of what the licenses. Now, as the local licensing authority, you have you have multiple types of licenses under your authority. But I think targeting one of them, which is the common victory license specifically with their liquor licenses, is could be most applicable to this. But I said, I did seek town council advice onto this concept. And 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 while they found out that, yes, the you, the board, the local licensing authority can do this. They didn't find any laws or 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 other regulations saying you can't, you know, like split the fees and then and then and 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 impose late fees. They don't advise it, frankly. They they think revoking the license is complicated and it's it's obviously it's not something we would ever want to do, right? So if they would kind of defeat the purpose of of the I, the intentions of this proposal would be to help the businesses out. And then but if we ended up having to revoke the license because they were late in however long we allowed them to be late, but then but tacking on late fees on top of that, it's not. And so so I I didn't survey the, I didn't survey the the businesses. I reached out to one, honestly, I reached out to one. And and they thought it was a good idea, but they 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 were more like appreciative of the of the fact that that we were considering it. But not necessarily, I I don't know if it would be a deal breaker if we didn't allow this. It's just, it's just that we're trying to be creative, but yeah, there's pros and cons. So I was looking for a direction with the board. If you want me to 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 kind of pursue this, we need to know because Becky needs to get the the renewal license out. I think you need it, Becky. Don't you need it by the seventeenth? We're going to have the renewed license on. I think that's what it was. I think we're on to have the the licenses renewed by the seventeenth.
Yeah, so I I need to deliver all the licenses just under, I don't know, there's twenty seven liquor licenses. They all need to be given to the businesses by the end of next week. So I have to finish all the paperwork and, you know, I try to hand deliver a lot of them, but because a lot of them are closed during the day now and they're not opening until after, I'm probably going to have to put them all in the mail to get them to the ones that aren't open during the day now. And we have to have them back in. They have to be in front of you folks for the November seventeenth meeting per the ABCCs because we don't have another meeting in November. There's there's some real strict timeframes, so they all have to be signed and returned to us by the seventeenth for that selectmen's meeting. And then we have them back on for the December, I think it's December third to approve the actual license for twenty twenty one.
So do we have to? If we if we say okay to this, do we we then have to vote on the changes? Do we have to vote? Do we have to take a formal vote at our next meeting to to get?
You'd have to take a vote tonight because I have to create a letter that would have to go out with the package that I have to deliver next week.
I wrote a draft motion in the in the attached notes.
You know, I I I love the idea of of trying to help out the businesses. Although from what I can see, first off, it's a lot of extra work for Becky that becomes difficult and then becomes problematic if something gets slowed up in the mail. And then we've got other issues there. In the grand scheme of things, when you look at a common vic license of eighty five bucks and and, you know, I see that the alcohol on premise is twenty two hundred dollars a year. But my understanding is that these, you know, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not limiting the 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 impact that all of this stuff has had. But my understanding is that these restaurants haven't really struggled all that much in the grand scheme, but maybe I'm wrong. That they've been doing pretty well. So I'm wondering if we're if we're causing ourselves, the the town hall staff, a lot of work for something that really, in the end of the day, doesn't benefit other than a, it's a very nice gesture from Frank's comment. Is is that really what we're doing? Are we are we? Or is it really going to be an impactful change that is worth the time and effort on town hall staff's part?
I will say I'm worried about what happens to the restaurants as winter comes.
That's true. That's a good point.
Yes.
Well, I think your overall point, I kind of agree with. Does it make that big of a difference in the end to justify the extra?
Yeah, based on the feedback you got for Frank, it seems it doesn't seem like it's going to be like that, but that's him.
Yeah, he's not the tip, he's not typical. He's been very successful. There have been others that haven't been as successful. And, you know, so that's, but I just don't know if at the end of the day, if we'd be making ourselves do work for no real benefit because most of them would just pay it anyway.
Right.
Okay. I I tend to agree. I think that my concern would be actually the 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 backend that if for some reason we end up having to revoke a license or, you know, penalize the businesses or whatnot, it it just ends up, there's so much unknown there that it's probably, unfortunately for the business, it's not worth us taking that kind of risk right now with the additional work, et cetera.
Okay, I'm good. Well, I don't know if we've all decided if that's the way we're going to go.
Do we?
So it depends if someone wants to move.
Good the way it is.
All right.
There you go, Becky.
No motion. Don't have a motion. That means that we're not going to do anything. All right. All right, sounds good then. Okay. So moving on to selectmen goals.
I can learn to understand you much better if I can get them.
That was good.
That's all part of, that's all part of goal setting.
Someone asked Siri, someone asked Siri for advice.
All right.
That's good.
So anyways, we're revisiting the goal setting that we were talking about at the last selectmen's meeting. I sent everyone home with homework to come back with some goals or some some ideas on how to quantify some of our goals better. I was wondering if anyone has any thoughts on those.
Yeah, I think I think the one thing that I was looking at is how do we prioritize these goals and which we'd be tackling, because I would, you know, it's difficult to tackle them at the same time sometimes. But it's if we could just look at them and say, what's a priority and what should we, you know, do first? And and then move on from there. And I I appreciate, you know, Greg's notes there because that that helps us out a little bit to kind of. What's that?
Go ahead.
And anyway, so I just think that that's just my point, that it would be nice to look at them and say, prioritize them. I still truly believe, and I I'm beating a dead horse, the having the master plan as one of our priorities. And I think it's important. And I think, you know, also looking at our policies, board policies, maybe something to revisit and take a look at that and come up with something that we feel comfortable with and that we're going to stick to it. That's that's the other thing. And the town charter, I mean, that's that's really an undertaking, so I don't know what it's going to take to to get there. So as much as is something that we need to work on, I personally don't think it's a it's a priority yet. It's something we could, you know, kind of work on it down the road.
The charter is a requirement by law.
Yes, it is by law, but I'm seeing looking, looking at it, that's a huge undertaking. So, you know, how is, how are you going to put the team together to get this thing done? I don't know.
We will definitely, we'll we'll start that process probably in the beginning of January. So that's definitely on our radar.
Right.
If I can push, not not actually, that's the wrong way to say it. Is there a way to clarify when you say you want the master plan to be a priority? Is there a way to clarify what that means? Because I feel like when I think of the master plan, I think of it as a guidebook. So we want to make sure that as things come forward, as as proposals come forward for planning or for or for new business or or whatever, that it's that it's meeting those needs in the master plan. But short of that, I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around how to use that as a goal. So I was wondering if you had any thoughts on that?
Well, I don't know if it's a goal. I just the implementation team should be the the goal of the master plan. So how how do we get that? And I know Greg is working on it. But we need to start kind of putting the pieces in place and who is going to be responsible for what. And we do need, based on what was the next committee, what's next committee was created. Yeah, well, that was created and it was, they were, you know, names next to all the people that are responsible for that certain goal. But I just think in in general, and I see what you're saying, because a lot of the stuff, in fact, if you start looking at the master plan, some of them already have been in place.
Well, I I think the key, the key point is you have to identify things perhaps within the master plan that then become the focus of a goal. But the master plan itself is a big.
It's a big thing, right?
It's 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 a global map.
Yep.
And you want to go, you want to get down to a street. And so identify the street, not identify the global map.
Right.
And that that would be something that we could actually establish a goal.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, David. I mean, that's basically what I was trying to get to.
Further to David's, to David's point is within the master plan, there there are many things that don't fall within our purview.
Correct.
So so, you know, what 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 in the mast, I think, I think we need to kind of find out, you know, for our own mindset in ourselves is what what in the master plan falls within our scope?
What is it that we own? Right.
Well, I would, if if I were to choose one thing within the master plan that we as an as a group could focus on and begin this year to really begin to to identify as a goal, as a goal per se, is the redevelopment of Powder Mill Road. And identify that as one of our, you know, focuses that we can then begin having discussions about when businesses come into town and they go to see Megan or Greg or whoever they go to see, that that's where we direct them to look for potential opportunities is Powder Mill, because that's where we want to develop. When a marijuana place comes in to look for places that we that that we want to develop, that they want to put their place. Don't direct them to downtown, direct them to Powder Mill. And and if 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 it doesn't meet our zoning, then let's work to get the zoning so that it meets the the requirements of of a development of of Powder Mill. That's identifying a specific issue within the master plan that we can address and have specified goals. That being, we identified four different businesses to 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 send them down to Powder Mill to to seek out potential locations for their development, you know, that type of a thing.
Where would you send them on Powder Mill?
Well, that's that's a, that's a different discussion. That's a different discussion too.
I think Bill, Bill Nemza's done a nice job of taking charge of that. And he's already put in place, you know, I I think is is it M A, MSP?
MAPC.
MAPC. So they've they've already interviewed a bunch of people. I think they're they're going to come up with a report based on, I guess, their finding. And that's a, that's a good start for us to have that, you know, to have that report. And I think to to David's point, Powder Mill is going to be the next area that needs to be developed. And it's a huge opportunity for us. So we got to figure out how that's going to, you know, fit into the bigger picture. And I think the Beijing Royal School is going to make a play, make a, you know, play a major role. And we just don't know where we are with that down the road. So but I, David's point is excellent. I think we need to pick what is it that we own? And we have to work with what we believe is going to be, you know, our our responsibility to make sure that that gets implemented.
To answer kind of what Chris asked, if you look at the 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 goals and who's assigned to them, we have about two of the many, many, many goals and they're assigned to us, but we're the supporting partner for about twenty or so, most of which are either through the DPW or the administrator's office, but then several other one-offs, EDC or this or that. But so I think I think working with with, you know, Justin and Greg specifically on those ones, I think we do naturally. What I'm a little bit more concerned about are the ones that are owned by, say, the EDC or some of the other groups that we don't interface with as frequently. And what I would love to do is have them come in once a year.
Report, yeah, give us a kind of report, yeah, yeah.
I know sometimes that there's inaction on those groups because they don't know what the select board would approve or not. And so just to have a face-to-face and review of the goals and what they prioritize for the next year, I think would help clear it up for them, would help clear up what they're working on for us and would help advance all those goals. And over the course of a year, you can space those meetings out in a way that's not too burdensome on us. They can have, you know, enough morning time that we're going to ask them to come and talk to us and it can be done in a positive and constructive way. You can work through the entire master course of a year and see, see where you sit. Just because every time a group comes in, you're knocking out, you know, a whole bunch of goals and they're going to say, we're doing this this year. These are sort of our medium term and these are in the long term. We don't have the resources to do that right now. So that's that's kind of what I would want to see. And in answer to Justin's original question, I think putting some more specific language around actually meeting those groups into item two for the goals could be helpful. But the one, the one, yeah, so that's where I'm in the master plan there.
Excellent. That's actually, that's actually one of the things that I wrote down too, Jeff, is, and I think that that was in our notes as well, is to, is to have committees come in once a year, you know, to report to us during a meeting. Not a town, not, you know, what they put in the town report, but just, you know, a little bit more, how they're incorporating the master plan into their decision-making and do, and how do they need or what kind of support they need from from our board. So I think that we're on the same page of that. So we can identify the the committees that we want to come in and and start kind of putting that out that I'll I'll work with Greg to see if we can get a schedule of some sort together to move forward with that. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes, and I am, and to piggyback somewhat off of that point, the number one draft goal on this list is the relationship with the school committee. And I know that we've been trying to have as many of those try, try board meetings. I'd like to have more, maybe once a quarter, by board meetings with the school committee and and the board, especially as we lead into this, what will be another difficult budget year. Now, of course, we have the budget subcommittee, which, by the way, is meeting on Tuesday night. But we have the budget subcommittee, but I think there's more of a general discussion that we can have with both boards meeting together. And I'd like to try as a goal for this, for our committee, is trying to see if we can work with the school committee to have a scheduled quarterly meeting once, so four times a year that we get together as two boards together, talking about issues that are facing the community and or the schools and working together to to see, okay, how do we plan to solve those problems? Or why those problems may be out of out of control for the school or for the town side or whatever. Just so that we're we're having more of that communication. So if if I were to establish a specific goal relative to the the school committee developing relationships with the school committee issue, that's how I would go about proposing that we do it. Quarterly meeting with both groups, scheduled, not something that is, you know, it's sort of becomes almost as if, okay, this, you know, the second Tuesday of the first month of the quarter is a school committee board of selectmen meeting. And it becomes sort of a part of our schedule. And if they can agree to it, then we can have that built in and it just becomes an extra meeting on the list.
Yeah, hi, Lydia.
So David, just so you know, Justin and I have already discussed this and we've already planned on having meetings between herself, me, Greg, and Brian Haas.
Yep, those are, those are the different, those are different meetings. Those are leadership team meetings that we've that we've had in the past. This is. This is full board meetings to have everybody's input. So that those are more of a subcommittee in my eyes of.
Right, except for we've never done that, to my knowledge, or haven't for quite a while. So.
We have, we have, but not, not in the last three years. That's true.
Then what?
Those leadership meetings, where like when you would get, when you were chair and you would get together with the.
We did it, we did him, we did him up until about the time that the asbestos thing blew up.
Yeah, so two years ago.
And then nobody wanted to sit down and talk about anything. But I I like the idea. I love the idea of the two, the two chairs and the two, the two, you know, leaders getting together. But I also liked the David's idea to meet, but I would, I would love to have a meeting with the school committee and not talk about dollars and cents for one minute. And just just black out the finance. We know the finance issues are there. We deal with them in our meetings. We deal with them with the finance committee. We deal with them in the budget subcommittee and in those tri board meetings. It it'd just be nice to sit with the school committee, and it doesn't have to be a full meetings worth, it can be whatever length of time it needs to be, and just talk about what are the, what are the other issues that don't relate to dollars and cents that we can help you with, or you can help us with, or, you know, better understand each other, better understand the board of the the school board's goals, and maybe you guys understand that some of our goals better, just that type of conversation rather than, because every meeting that we have with the tri board, we get about three minutes in, everybody goes around the table and says, who are we, boom, money? And that's all we talk about for two or three hours. I love to not, I'd love to sit with you guys as a school committee and not talk about dollars and cents for one minute. Let's just talk about all the other issues that both of our boards have that could relate to one another, assist to one another in some way or help each other in some way, rather than talk, we know there's a dollar and cents issue. We don't, but we're beating that dead horse. Let's talk about some other ways that we can assist the school committee, or the school committee can assist us, kind of like, you know, the the recent contract we agreed on with the, you know, the buildings and the grounds and everything, those type of issues. What what other issues out there are there that we can help you guys with or that you guys can help us with to get?
That would be great.
Place.
And and I think to your point, Chris, I think during that conversation, you come up with ideas and how to improve the image just in general, because you want to make that, you know, make sure that it makes attractive to people to understand why our schools are so great in comparison to what your other people think from outside in. So we need to work on the aspect of promoting, promoting our town and our schools, doing a better job at it together. How do we promote that? How do we promote the the great, you know, accomplishments that the school has done and and what the town is doing to, you know, help out and, you know, move the town forward? I mean, that's all, I think that's, that's a great idea about having discussions not related to money.
So what I will do is I would actually, I I owe Lydia an email in.
No, you don't.
So setting up one of those meetings, but if I can do that, we'll, we'll start with that meeting, and then we'll talk about putting other meetings on the schedule for for the boards, just just to check in with each other, you know, and see if that works for for a little while and and go from there. Because again, it's it's not set in stone, it's a goal. So, you know, if we find out that we're not getting what we need from it, or if we feel that we don't need to meet that often, or we need to meet more, we can, we can adjust. It's it's a moving target. Does that sound good to you, Lydia?
Yep, that's great.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, not for nothing, Justine, but also when we have those discussion in in the master plan itself, there's some components of it that that it fits into what we need should, we should be talking about from our perspective and the school's perspective as a as a hot town. So, yeah.
Perfect. One other thing I wanted to bring up real quick to piggyback on what Armin was saying, the other thing that I had a, that I had an idea about regarding the policies and procedures that Armin brought up. So our policies and procedures, manual, I say manual, but it's it's printed, is, so it was dated, it's, I think it's dated and approved in 2009.
Nine, right.
So what I would like to propose is to have a member of the board work with Greg to review the policies and then bring it forward to the rest of the board to flush out, approve, et cetera. So, you know, you have one member working with the town administrator to kind of, you know, get through the nitty gritty of it, and then bring it forward for the board for their ultimate approval. So does that make sense? Because again, that's going to be a project as well. It's going to be something that's going to be a little bit daunting. Does anybody have any opinions on that?
I volunteer, David.
No, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to do it.
David, did you do the first one?
I was on the board at the time that it was approved. I did not, I think they were actually designed or created by either John Curran or Mike Sullivan.
Okay, all right. So I, so David, do you want to do it? Do you?
Yeah, sure, I'll work with Greg, not a problem.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So there, so there, Armin, we have two policies, so we have two, two balls down for you.
I like that.
All right. Anyone else have anything else they want to add before I continue?
Okay, well, are you looking? I just, I don't know if I'm, and I feel like, again, I'm overstepping, because I like the conversation, so I don't want to interrupt it, but I'm, I am now. So it sounds like you, you've identified a couple of different measurements for the first draft goal, developing a stronger collaboration between the school committee and board of selectmen.
Correct.
Identified like three ways would do that. It sounds like you, you've identified, again, more measurements to accomplish the draft goal number two, establishing reporting procedures with stakeholders. And what's, and the other one we just talked about, review and consider updating board of second, sounds like we have a plan to do that. But so, so I'm, I actually see those, at least those three, number one, two, and don't, don't put too much thought in how I ordered these, but one, two, and five.
Yeah.
As solid. But I mean, is that, is that the consensus of the board, that at least those three are? All right, cool, great.
Yeah, I agree.
But but with the language of one being where it is right now?
Yeah, so tell me, how else would you write it? That's on, that's what I'm getting at, if you want.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer to that question. My, my own concern is if I'm, you know, a resident and I look at that, I'm just thinking to myself, what on earth does that mean? So, you know, so when I push for some more specificity, it's not just for ourselves. I think I have, every time we revisit these, a better understanding of what they mean. But for somebody outside looking in, just looks at that goal, they're not going to necessarily have time to read all the notes below, and they say, what are they actually going to do? It's just seems like, these seem like the aspirational goals I've seen a million corporations put up all over the place. And so to have a little bit more meat in the text that we already have thought out would be nice, I think.
Okay, so I think Greg, to that end.
It's a minor point, and I think it really only applies to one at this point for me. And, yeah.
So and and I, I think that, you know, to that end, you could probably just do like, you know, that's, that's the draft goal is one, and then underneath, how we accomplish it.
Yes, right. So sometimes, everyone has different kind of ways to do goals, but you can do goals and then you can do tasks, or sometimes they call them assignments, or sometimes they call them strategies, or sometime, and it doesn't.
Strategy, I like strategy.
Yeah. And then, and then one of your strategies is quarterly meetings by, 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 you know, by quarterly, and then, and then you, you're through doing those strategies, you're working towards that goal. And that's kind of like how the master plan is written. You have like bigger strategies, and then you have subsets.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good. So we can codify that a little bit more.
Yeah, very good.
Anyone else have anything else? So Greg, I have a couple more for you. But so, so I'm actually revisiting a couple of things. And the first is, and this might be something that Megan was tasked with, I realize that everybody is crazy busy, but have we done any, thought anymore about questions for board appointments? What were we going to do about that?
Yes, I have a working draft of of like the application. I just haven't shared it with the board yet.
Okay.
It was on my list of things to do. I started it, and then 1,000 emails came. So no.
Be just seen.
It's not, it's no, but I loved the idea anyways. And we're doing a similar concept for this pre-application for the HCA's. Like, I, I like adding a little bureaucracy if it helps us along with it. So it's good.
Awesome. And and the other thing, as far as the enhanced public outreach through from the board regarding statements to address significant occurrences, I I realize that's more for if we're doing a joint statement for either the board of health that just came out, or, you know, maybe FinCom or maybe school committee. But it's just, I feel like, could we possibly do it? It's not a board of selectmen thing, it's a town administrator thing. Can we possibly post a town administrator report the day after our meetings, like on Facebook?
We typically do, actually.
Do you put it on Facebook?
I was doing it for a little while. I put, we posted on the town website, but yeah, I'm happy to do that. I'll add that.
I, again, I'm adding more work to you, and I.
No, that's okay. I think that's good. I think we'll take all suggestions. I'll, we'll have a note to do that going forward. Where one thing we're trying to do is post, I'm trying to post the meeting agendas day of to remind folks that, you know, you can, they can log in, and that's been getting shared around. But yeah, I think, I think a next day TA report update is a great idea.
Like a wrap up type of thing, just because there is so much information in those reports. And and I know you can go find them on the, on the, on the website, and you guys do a great job with that. But I'm just thinking that, you know, if it's right in front of people, there might be more up to read it. So anyone else have anything else? Okay, so does that sound, that sounds good? Greg, do you have any questions on that? Or are you good with all of that?
No, I am good with that. But what we didn't talk about is the number six, the board of health. No, I'm not saying, I'm asking, do you want me to take those off? If if we didn't talk about it tonight, do you want me to take those off?
Um, well, I feel like, I mean, I'd have to codify more the, so that the empower the board of health to to guide the community. So is that that we're, I mean, technically, they are empowered to do that. It's just a matter of maybe making sure that, well, now that we have a liaison to the board of health. Thank you. Yeah? Yes.
I have not even had time to look up when the meetings are, I've been a bit swamped, but.
As we all, I know, it's crazy. But that, no, I think that will, I think that personally, and and the board can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that might take care of itself, where we'll be able to share more concerns, or we'll be able to share the occasional concern. Anybody else have any other?
In many ways, that falls into the same category as, I guess, number two, where we talk about reporting procedures for committees and stakeholders, where they're one of our committees, they're one of our stakeholders, they're one of our, you know, they've become to the, they've come to the fore this year because of the issues that they face. But I think we just need to identify, if you remember when we had our goals meeting where we talked about, you know, how does FinCom fit into this whole thing? And what is their role? And how should we associate with them? It's the same thing in my eyes as, you know, with the board of health. This is not the last time I don't, I would think that the board of health is going to become a focus, not necessarily with another COVID thing, hopefully, thank God. But with other issues, the board of health should be towards, you know, one of our, along with so many other committees. But my point being that I think we just need to identify the roles and give, be prepared to give authority where authority is granted, and understand everybody's role within the community as a, as a committee. So the way I see number two is establishing what the relationship should be between certain committees and the board of selectmen.
David, just so you know, understanding qualifying roles is down there. So I think you could add, you know, if you want to, Board of Health under the Economic Development Committee, School Committee, Planning Board, because you could put it right.
Yes, but I I would fit in every committee in that, in that category. And I'm not saying that every committee has to be on, you know, has to be improved, their relationships have to be improved and all this other stuff. But just, just so we have an understanding of what the role of each.
But I think to to Greg's question, I think we could remove number six, take it out of there and make it to your point, David, put it on the understanding qualifying.
Oh, yeah, that's, that in there. I think it's a general that fits into some of the other, some of the other categories.
You don't have to have it all standalone, you know.
Initial thought is it should be standalone, because there's a global pandemic.
Correct.
I said, over health this year. I think I asked for it, and if we don't feel it needs to stand alone out there, I'm, I'm happy with that. It's it's more whether or not the community gets done than it gets listed in the goal.
Yeah, and I, and I think that it makes, it made sense, and it makes sense to have the board of health be identified as, that we establish ourselves as being a focus point on them and helping them achieve their goals and getting the community to understand what the best advice is and all, though, all of those things that they're doing. But I think it goes with the, with a bigger picture in working with relationships between what is the relationship between the board of selectmen and you name the committee? What's the relationship of the board of selectmen and the, and the recreation committee? What expectations do we have of them? What, what expectations should they have of us? Finance committee, board of health.
That's all.
Cultural council.
That's all covered in two. I think six was independent, because there might be, that conversation is different this year than it will be in any other year.
Correct, yeah.
Fair enough, yep.
So Greg, I think that we're okay with removing six, as long as we keep board of health in the forefront of knowing that, you know, maybe, maybe we want to touch base with them maybe more than, more than once. So, does that make sense, Jeff?
My preference is to keep it in, but I, it's, it's, it's fine if it, if it falls out, it's, it's, because it will get done, that's the important part.
Right, right. Well, if you want to keep it in, I don't, I don't care. That's fine. Keep it in, sure, why not?
Okay, fine. Hey, I like, I like an easy answer. I mean, like, like, we are already accomplishing that, but that's, that's in October, you know, like, we're accomplishing go, goals. So like, yeah, it's, that's fine.
Yeah. All right. So other than that, are you, so Greg, are you all set with your direction? And does board have anything else for Greg regarding that?
Well, my, yeah, and I'm just helping the board draft your own goals, I mean, like that. So I, I think I got, I think I have some, some good, what I'm going to try to do is kind of like outline work plans almost, but through these strategies. I actually like strategies, I'm glad I just came up with that, but like, to, to say, to say like, this is how we.
How you can accomplish it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll draft some of those, send it back to you guys, and then you tell me if you, if you like, whether.
Okay, sounds good to me. All right, then let us, let's move on to the ever popular town administrator report.
Great. So it is, it is, so from time to time, Justin DiMarco puts a lot in there, so he did this.
It was awesome. By the way, it was very detailed and very informative, very cool.
And what he does is he asks all the foremen to give their, their sort of like what they've been up to. And so that's, that's how it's broken down. But, um, so it is great, and I like how we're, we're getting pictures and, and, you know, that's always required, but we're getting some good pictures. And of course, I do want to highlight the good work that the fire department did.
Yes.
And and I think we, we, as last time as well, but with Orchard Drive this time, and like some great pictures. I don't know who takes these pictures, but they're, they're great.
And it was nice, nice comment from the residents of Orchard Drive, too.
Right, I didn't share that publicly, but I, yes, so we did, so I, you know, for, yeah, we did get some feedback, and it's not often we do. So it's good, it's good we got some feedback. But I also really like looking at the, at the pictures as well that Justin gave as to the work of of DPW, to see how deep, how deep are our cities worth of.
No, no pun, no pun intended.
No, it wasn't intended. But no, I mean, because it's not every day you get to see underneath, underneath the the road. And then you can see that, like, this is no small undertaking when, when there's, there's a water main break. And and that's, that's why the rates are set, you know, we got to, we have to pay for that. And and it's, it's a huge undertaking to try to address this. I also wanted to highlight some of the stuff that Megan's, Megan's busy, per usual. But, you know, she, she did, you know, so the, her first bullet under the Office of Municipal Services, I know I'm speaking for Megan, and she's on the call, but she was able to successfully get a department assistant. uh, she was able to successfully get a department assistant.
Oh, congratulations.
No.
Yeah, so she, Megan doesn't have to pick up the phone all the time by herself, but that's coming down there. Megan, do you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I I got someone to start, um, yesterday, midday. So it's been like twenty-four hours. Um, but no, this is, this is a young woman that I, that I worked with previously. She interned um, for me in my office in Lexington, and she's a University of Vermont grad who's interested in getting into local government. So, um, it seems like a good fit. And, you know, we're, we're excited to have a presence in the office that's helping with, you know, some of the just general administration. Um, but, you know, we'll ask the public to kind of bear with me as we're really just trying to go over some of the basics. Um, and we're trying to keep up with all the permitting, but you know, there, there's, there's a lot, there's a, there's a steep learning curve at the beginning. So, um, but but we're working on it. So I, I'm, but I'm glad, I'm really glad to have her. Her name's Janelle Franklin.
Great, welcome, Janelle.
So, and so Janelle looks out onto the early voting. So that's the other thing I should, I should mention is that we have been busy also as of, so on Saturday, they had, actually, I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but we had a good turnout already, um, on Saturday, Sunday, today, yesterday, and then tomorrow will be our fifth day of early voting. And, um,
I think there were a hundred and eighty people there on Monday.
Yes, that was Monday. So we had a huge turnout on Saturday. And then, and then so, and since then, so, um, not as expected, like, there probably won't be that much of a turnout on the day of, like November third, but there will be turnout. It just won't, you know, because of this early voting, because of absentee balloting, that, you know, like it, it'll just be that much less people. Um, but it also means unsurprisingly, big turnout for the presidential election.
Yeah.
And then, uh, and I, I gotta tip, you know, I gotta, I gotta applaud, um, all the election workers that have been working basically nonstop for four months, um, multiple elections, town meetings. They, they're, they're tireless, uh, and, um, and I've seen a couple of new faces, um, but, but there's, there's like a core group of election workers that have been day in and day out, all day, every day. And I really, I appreciate their work. All right, that's all I had.
All right. Um, anyone have any questions for Greg about the town report?
I, I, I have one quick question. Um, I was unfamiliar with the Aspid River Blue and Green Trail.
So was I.
That was mentioned. Um, how formal is that trail? And we shouldn't advise the residents that it even exists. I mean, is it, is it just dirt? Is it grass? Is it, um, i- is there any formality to it? Do you know that it's there? Is there any, uh, signage directing people to it? Um, I, I, you know, I had never heard of it. I was really surprised.
On the street entrances where the trail goes, there are conservation land markers. You've seen the two wooden posts with the crossbars. And it's a pretty well-established trail that runs back there along the river. Um, including a random Christmas tree that has been decorated out there.
Is it an easy walk? I mean, for people who don't, aren't familiar with it, or is it, is it like climb over rocks and then, you know?
It's, it's mostly flat, but it's like on a hill. So you're walking kind of parallel to the hill, not up it, but, and that's the riverbank is the hill, so.
Yeah. Uh, and it looks like it's like almost a mile long. It's just, I was really surprised by, uh, the fact that it even existed. And I'd never, that's why we need to send people over to Powder Mill Road, Chris.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look for that trail myself. Like, can I play golf on that trail?
You'd be in the water.
Hawaii is a fairway.
No, I.
I've never heard of it, so I, I know I've never heard of it.
Yeah. That's why I added the map, because when I, I read it in in Katie's report, I was, I, I'd never heard of it. So, um, yeah, so the map is up there. And, yeah.
Very cool. Something else to explore?
Yep.
Anyone else have any questions can, uh, conversation regarding the town, uh, Town Administrator's Report?
Yeah, just a quick thing. I saw this as repaired two dozen fire hydrants issues.
Yeah.
Anybody knows what's causing the damages or whatever the?
So.
They're old?
AGE, they're getting old.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I don't know how many fire hydrants there are across the town.
Okay.
But we have, we have city water, so to speak. And so like, that just means a lot of fire hydrants. And it's just, just maintenance.
And and then on the, uh, police report, is that, is that a quarterly thing that's, that it's provided? Or is that the, the report that comes from the police department?
The police, no, there's so, so the, all the departments, I require all the departments to submit a, uh, submit their submission for the Town Administrator's Report, um, at least once a month. So between the two, like meetings, I ask for that. But the, but the, the police do it monthly, I believe, for their own, for their own, um, credentials. So they, they have to do regular reporting.
Um, so the one you provided in your report, what is that? Is that for the month?
That's it, that's it. So, so chief, chief gets it from, I can't remember who, who amongst the staff, like, kind of like drafted initially, submitted to the chief, and then chief gives it to me.
Cause I'll come, I'm, I'm kind of interested. Is this called arrests? And I don't know how that is in comparison to any, any other time during this period. I mean, is it, is it up? Is it down?
It looks like they say that they, the statistics and activities have basically returned to pre-COVID activities, so.
Oh, okay.
And if you go to the town, if you go to the town report, at least they used to. And I don't know, but I don't know if it's in the town report now, but they would give, um, totals for number of arrests, number of stoppage of cars, number, I mean, there's boatloads of information in the town report. And we used to get, um, monthly, uh, reports from the, from the police department, very similar to this, that gave us this information on a regular basis. Um, it's, they have to keep track of it, as Greg says, anyway. I mean, it's, it's like the, it's basically summarizing the blotter for the beacon into one.
Yeah, I read that every week, but sometimes you look at it like I'm looking at twen- two hundred and twenty-two stops, you know, motor vehicle stops. And that's a lot. So we, we, we know what's, what was the outcome? You know, what was the outcome of those?
You want to know how many tickets they get?
Exactly. How many citations, how many warnings, you know?
I think, I mean, the chief obviously has that information.
Oh, I'm sure.
There, there's questions like that, um, you can let me know or let chief know. And then, and then we can get you that, that, whatever little detail that he's allowed to give. I'm not sure, but whatever, whatever you're asking, I can, I can ask. I can ask specifically for him to get back to you about the motor vehicle stuff if you want.
Yeah, if you can. I mean, it's just, I'm kind of curious to see out of the two hundred and twenty-two stops, how many warnings, how many citations, and what was the stops for, you know?
That's only seven a day, and it could be for speeding, it could be for.
Red light could be anything, right?
Yeah.
Yep. All right, anyone else? Okay, uh, on to the chair report. I have so many things to say. No, I'm actually really. I, uh, I actually have one thing, and, um, obviously, I commend, um, the fire department for, um, actually, I commend the fire department for their actions during the both fires in the past few weeks. Um, and, uh, and their, their quick response. I also commend, uh, the DPW for, uh, their response regarding trees down and, um, all the damage that came down during the windstorm. That windstorm was crazy, and I know people are still cleaning up from it. So, um, I commend all the hard work, um, for them. Um, and I really appreciate, uh, their response and their professionalism. Um, and the other people that I want to, um, commend is actually, um, I want to commend the, the public safety dispatchers that probably had to answer seven hundred and forty-two thousand phone calls. Um, because, uh, and I really appreciate that, um, they probably had insane amounts of volume on both the, the night of the fire, the day, the morning of the fire, and then the night of the storm and the fire. So, um, I, I commend them as well. I know they work hard and, um, and they deserve it. So. Uh, that is all I have for today. Uh, Chris, do you have anything for us tonight?
I had basically the same two comments that you had, especially, um, you know, the fire department, obviously for those two things, but, um, even more so the DPW because of the, um, traveling a- across, um, Route sixty-two from Maynard Powder Mill Road, from the Powder Mill Carrotta, all the way over to, um, where it meets up with, um, Middlesex Turnpike in Burlington, right above the Burlington Mall. And I have to tell you, it, it, you know, driving through Maynard was, was no problem. And, uh, you know, also out, out one seventeen was no problem. Stowe, um, Harvard, all those towns had, you know, roads closed and power down for days. And I couldn't go past, um, I couldn't go past Conkin Center on the way out there on sixty-two. I had to take, you know, go back up to Route two and everything, because their roads were closed because the trees were down. And we had the same, same issues. But as was, ours were resolved in, you know, overnight hours. And, you know, as soon as they happened, and our roads were clear, and everybody that needed to get out of Maynard, to get out of Maynard, um, you just couldn't go too far once you get out. But, yeah, again, it was just, it's just like the winter when we talk about snow, we, we seem to have a, uh, roads always passable, always drivable, and others around us are struggling with the lack of the same. So, uh, you know, kudos to, uh, Justin and his team.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, sir. Uh, Armand?
I don't have anything to add. I mean, you guys mentioned all, all the, uh, important things that we should be recognizing, all the important people we should be recognizing. So, thanks for all the hard work.
Excellent. Uh, Jeff?
Um, yeah, a few things I'll, I'll add in. My thanks to the police and fire actually lived near Orchard Terrace, so I got to see the quick response um, from, from the police department. Um, I, I talked to the dispatchers myself, um, calling it in. They were calm and composed while they were clearly getting multiple calls. Um, and so I saw the police and then the fire department each responded in quick succession. So thanks to each of those teams. Um, I also had a good experience the other night. I rented out the Fine Arts Theater, which is available. Um, uh, for, they're renting it out for a hundred dollars. Uh, I had a group of maybe eight friends. We felt we were able to distance appropriately within the theater. They gave us a large one. Um, this is, I think, the way that they're going to be able to make it through this pandemic. So I just wanted to highlight that the, this is a business acting creatively. Um, and a unique one to Maynard to stay open. Uh, and so I had a good experience with them. They were very helpful.
What movie did you see?
Uh, so you can see any of their Halloween movies. They have like a list of fifteen movies right now. We watched The Addams Family from nineteen ninety-one, which was fantastic.
What year?
Haven't seen it in a couple of decades, nineteen ninety-one, and it's, it's just as funny as I remember it.
That was the first one with Raoul Julia?
Raoul Julia.
First one, that's right. So I know my friends the next day before noon already sent me a picture, said they watched The Addams Family Values. It was, it was neat. So you get your own.
Very nice.
Can you, can you see movies other than Halloween movies?
If you can find a Blu-ray and bring it over, they'll show it. And I think they'll do a DVD, too, but the Blu-ray is recommended just because it's a better quality.
That's cool.
You can screen.
Any movie in my Blu-ray collection I could bring over there and they'll show it?
Yeah.
That's kind of cool.
Yes.
Is, are you, so are you allowed to like buy popcorn and concessions?
Yeah, I had a, and and they have, they have beer and wine now as well. So you can have beer and a popcorn and a finger raisinettes and watch whatever movie you want. That you can.
How cool is that? A great experience.
I actually had, I, and my, my, my kids worked there, and I had no idea that they're, they were actually selling the beer and wine already. Because they've been working at the Creamery, so I didn't realize. So they, they did go forward with that.
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Very cool.
That is very cool.
So, um, a few other notes. I met, uh, I can't even remember. I think it was just yesterday with the Director of the Massachusetts Climate Action Network, uh, and with, um, Kate Wheeler, who is of our not active right now Sustainability Committee, but we're, we, we had a good discussion with them about directions that we can move forward. So I'm hoping that at some point, maybe pushing into the new year, we can get that back up and active. Um, and then finally, I, I received an email from, um, uh, Maggie Day, who is very active in Indigenous Peoples' Rights about, um, the school committee, uh, last year or earlier this year, rather, changed the name from Columbus Day and their holiday schedule to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And she suggested that we could do the same at the town level. We don't use the term Columbus Day very much, but we do for the official holiday. And so I've invited her to speak at an upcoming meeting, uh, about why that's important and just to start that discussion and, and to look into that. So that should be coming up, I think, for the next meeting, uh, if she was available. So.
Yeah.
That was it for me.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Um, yes, Greg and I have been talking about that on the agenda. So, um, I believe that's going to be on the fourth. So. Uh, stay tuned for, uh, that presentation. And, uh, David, do you have anything else?
I do. Quick, two quick things. Um, in addition, Greg touched upon it, um, voting. I actually voted early on Saturday. And I want to commend those, uh, that were there, not only the voters, because the line went out the door, um, early Saturday morning. But, uh, more importantly, the, uh, the poll workers who, uh, were pleasant and cleaning. And, you know, they made sure they cleaned off the, the tables so that everybody was comfortable, um, coming in after the last person had left. And so, uh, congratulations to the whole team. And, um, that includes our new temporary, um, uh, town clerk who was there and very pleasant and greeting all the voters as they came in. And I observed it. She didn't see me there, and I saw what she was doing. Um, and it was, it was legit stuff. So, good for her. Um, then, um, the, uh, the other thing was, um, last, I guess it was maybe two Saturdays ago. Um, you know, we were, we were complimenting town employees. Um, the DPW barn had shredding. And I went down there and, uh, Joe Foster was the receptionist as he arrived. And I mean, talk about somebody who is, uh, willing to be, um, friendly, helpful, and enjoying what he's doing, uh, on a Saturday morning, uh, when I'm sure he could have a lot of other things to do. And it was the, I think it was the Saturday after the storm that we'd been talking about. So he did mention about the, uh, uh, about the cleanup efforts. And on top of that, the folks that were there from, uh, from our, uh, what's the name of the company that does the trash pickup and recycling? Yeah, Harvey was there. Um, and they let me get out of my car because I wanted to watch how the process worked. They have a television screen on the truck when they dump everything into the shredder, and you can watch the stuff go and get it shredded up. And it would be really, really pleasant experience.
Pleasant smelling wise or just?
No, it was paper. So, uh, so anyway, I wanted to thank Joe and the team that was over there, because it was a great little experience, experience. I'm glad I went because I had a lot of stuff to get rid of. And, uh, so the twenty bucks, you can't beat it. That's it.
Thank you, David. Actually, I forgot one more thing. Um, you talking about the shredding reminded me that the Boy Scouts, um, this Saturday, uh, are doing their electronics recycling drive and bottle and can drive. So I know we all have things that have been stacking up for months and months. So, um, they'll be down there, I believe, nine to twelve. Uh, same location across from St. Bridget's Church. So that would be important. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Excellent. I have a second.
Second.
All right, everyone wave. Everyone in favor?
Have a great night, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Everyone.
I thank you guys.
Thank you.